Evening, everyone. Welcome to the feedback. This is the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals. And we are going to have, we have a packed agenda this evening, so I appreciate everyone's attendance. Going to jump right in and ask for some housekeeping items to be taken care of. I'd like a motion to approve the bills for 97.50 and 155 for the Community Advocate and 148.64 for office supplies from W.B. Mason. Want to get a motion?
I move to pay those bills as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. First 6:30 hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Scrappy Pet Enterprises, Inc., 11 Kent Drive, Northborough, Mass., 01532, for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, to conduct a dog training services within a portion of a building upon property located at 810 Boston Turnpike in a limited industrial district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 35, Plot 025001. Can I ask the appellant to please introduce themselves and explain to the board why you're here tonight?
Sure. I'm Suzette Spitzer. So Scrappy Pet Enterprises is my company, and I've purchased a Zoom Room dog training franchise. So the business model is actually to train the owners to train their dogs. It has a maximum of eight dogs per class with their owners attached to them for a 50-minute class period. So we've got folks coming in and giving us that little bit of room so that we've got about like five minutes for them to exit, another five minutes for the new set of dogs and folks coming into the building. And the variance request is for, a variance for the use there because it's light industrial and all of that, I'm going to kind of turn over to Mark to talk through further, but if there's any other questions about the business itself, I can, I can answer those. The hours of operation would be 11:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, and then nine to five on the weekends. And that is, so yeah, so that is Monday through Sunday, so seven days a week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark Donahue from Fletcher-Tilton with Suzette and Scrappy Pet Enterprises to present this request for use variance for a site located as the public announcement indicated within the limited industrial zone where a retail store or service establishment is not a permitted use. This is a site not dissimilar to a couple of other sites along Route 9 that are pockets of limited industrial that over a period of time have developed into a more retail type of use than the industrial type of use that the zoning comes for. This island of limited industrial binds, or is bound by the commercial business zone used for the automobile dealerships just west of the site, and then on the opposite site, just east by the apartment zoning district by the large apartment complex that is there. In order to meet the requirements of a use variance, as this board knows, there are certain requirements that must be met, and as set forth in our application, we believe that the application meets those requirements. The property is unique because of its proximity to Route 9, which is much more of a retail or commercial type corridor than the industrial zones in other parts of the town, which are more segregated for those particular uses. And it's also unique because it's bound by those type of activities, commercial business and apartment, where industrial type uses that are the uses permitted as of right in the industrial really would be to some extent inconsistent with the way that those sites have been developed. An enforcement of the bylaw by not allowing the use would constitute a hardship. The hardship for Suzette is pretty clear. She wouldn't be able to put her business there, and she's been looking for a site to locate in Shrewsbury for an extended period of time that works for the ease of customers to be able to find it and be able to take care of a geographic distance people are willing to travel. The site has developed through other applications to this board and to the planning board into a mixed-use type of development. It has active indoor recreation in the rear of the building. It has other types of retail or businesses that people come and go to on a regular basis, and therefore trying to find a use that would meet the requirements would, would be difficult for the owner. Relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. This board has, in these situations, granted such relief at this site and by way of example at 910 Boston Turnpike down the road without any detriment to the public good in that there's no large traffic that travels to or from the site that adds to the burden on Route 9. As Suzette indicated, she has eight patrons on a 50-minute schedule, so it doesn't tax either the site in any fashion or otherwise. And it can also be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the purposes of zoning bylaw, which while the use variance, use variance is required, the bylaw does permit that in these particular cases and these unique circumstances, and we think those requirements are met here. And so we would ask this board respectfully to grant the use variance and let us proceed. There is a side issue that's raised in the memo from staff, but I'll stop there and see if there's any questions or issues, and I could touch on that also.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister, would you like to add anything?
Well, I would probably like to touch on that and to go into a little bit of staff comment if the board doesn't mind. So as seen on the parking plan for this use, they're showing parking contributing or being calculated using both 820 and 810 Boston Turnpike. So it's the opinion of the zoning enforcement officer that a special permit is going to be required through the planning board for a shared parking agreement as outlined in our zoning bylaw. There are particular concerns around pedestrian safety, about movement around the site if the shared parking moves forward without any sort of oversight. So at this time, the town doesn't feel that the parking plan adequately references or speaks to the shared parking agreement and takes issue with, again, this parking plan as it is related to the proposed use on the site.
If I might, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
So those points, which Ms. McAllister and I have had a chance to chat through, a few different things. We have a respectful disagreement with the building inspector on interpretation of the bylaw. Your bylaw in the applicable section basically says parking needs to be provided in what we read be three different scenarios. Parking for a use needs to be provided on the lot of that use. The bylaw then goes on to say, except where two or more businesses may jointly provide the required spaces on one or more of their lots contiguous to each other. And that is in Section 3.5, Article 7. It then goes on as a third option to obtain a special permit from the planning board if parking is, is going to be located remotely but within 200 feet of the site. And so we read that as three different ways in which one can meet the parking. And here, the parking would be met in that 810 Boston Turnpike is owned essentially in common with 820 Boston Turnpike, and as demonstrated by the parking plans submitted, the aggregate of those sites provides 133 spaces where for the existing uses plus the proposed use, there are 114 required spaces. We also, with regard to the, beyond the technical part of that, and I can come back to that in just a moment, on the issue of pedestrian safety, the plan that's submitted to your board does reflect improvements suggested by the applicant to be brought into it. What we're indicating is clear marking on the private driveway, which has walkways on each side for pedestrians marked, to a crosswalk that takes them to a crosswalk away from the Route 9 driveway and gets people from the 820 Boston Turnpike side to the 810 Boston Turnpike side and vice versa. The suggestion that somehow parking is insufficient is respectfully not fully consistent with the whole record, despite the interpretation that I just outlined of the bylaw that parking is not required by special permit here. In fact, the most recent use, other use of 810 Boston Turnpike did not have to come to this board, but did go to the planning board for such a special permit, and that involved a temple or house of worship that went forward at that time. Obviously, that's a much larger use. It involves much, much more traffic coming to and from the site in a very intense period. The planning board heard that and issued a decision in March of this year in which the board found traffic and pedestrian circulation have been reviewed by town staff and the planning board and have been deemed acceptable. So the, the record simply doesn't support the concept that somehow there's a problem out there, nor does the existence of my client, if the use variance were to be allowed, suggest that all of a sudden that would create a problem. Because as you can see on the parking plan, there is sufficient parking in front of the site for the use, certainly, particularly when one talks about the Monday or the evening hours that Ms. Spitzer touched on and also the weekend hours. What I would suggest, in what's now become a long-winded way to say it, would be that the issue with regard to the interpretation of the bylaw be addressed if this board were to grant the variance, that either the building inspector determined the special permit's not required, or town council appined to that fact, or the applicant goes to gets the special permit rather than trying to argue it here in some fashion. We'll talk with Ms. Sheehan about it. If we can't resolve it, we'll ask town council to weigh in on interpretation of what the bylaw says, and we'll live by whatever that is. And if it says go get a special permit, we'll have to go get it as a condition of the, of the use variance if this board's inclined to grant it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Board members?
Sure, I'll start. Thank you, Attorney Donahue, for your presentation. I, I don't have a problem with the use variances. I agree that that, particularly where there's the indoor activity center for children, I mean, it seems like it's all sort of consistent with the way the property's being used, so I don't have so much an issue with that. I do see the safety concern. I was wondering, as far as parking, I wonder if you could explain the parking diagram we have. Is the shaded area that walkway, is that an actual sidewalk, or is that just painted stripes on the ground?
It, it doesn't exist today. It's, it would be added as part of the application here.
Okay.
And that would be limited to markings on the, on the ground.
Markings, okay.
Painted, reflective paint on the ground.
So I, I, so thank you for clarifying that. I, I do tend to agree with the zoning enforcement officer that that, you're, it's the driveway from Route 9 is right there, and you'd be basically left to be walking on the pavement on this painted area. I hear what you're saying, that there's, there's likely adequate parking in front of the actual location, but in the event that someone parked over there, that seems like it could be dangerous, particularly in the evening. So I don't know if you have anything else to offer on that. I defer to my colleagues to ask more or say more.
The point is well-taken. It's there. It, it, to some extent, needs to be because particularly when you get onto the 810 Boston Turnpike side, there are some significant grade changes, and if you started to talk about a full-fledged sidewalk, it now needs to meet ADA requirements to go up that driveway.
Right.
And it's, you're going to be chasing something that's just simply not going to work for a 4,000-square-foot site to be quite crass.
So I think, I guess what I'm saying, though, is I think if you're, if you're asking the board to count those spaces on the other property towards the required number, then the access to those needs to be safe. And to say that it just isn't going to work kind of seems to go against your suggestion that that is a solution, counting the spaces on the other side.
It, it was part of what I was going to say, but the other part of what I was going to say is, is in thinking about it and talking with the engineer, we do think we can improve those markings and the crosswalk by installing at the crosswalk itself and activate it, you know, where one has to push the button.
Oh, and it flashes.
It flashes, and also the flashing in the pavement so that it'll be clear that someone is crossing at that area, because, you know, it, certainly in the darker hours, it could be an issue. We understand that.
Yeah.
But given the fact that one is entering a parking lot, we would hope that that would be more than adequate warning to at least bring someone's attention to the fact to be a little bit more cautious than, than other ones.
Okay, that's helpful. That's just where my head's at. I think, I think it's not unreasonable to count the spaces on the other side, but if we're going to, I think that the safety issue needs to be really well addressed. So that's all I have to say.
Ms. Cassap?
I agree with my colleague. I, I'm all for shared parking. I think it's a grand idea, but I do too worry about the safety. I'm not sure if we were to go ahead and grant this use variance, if we can condition that. You spoke about holding off on that and, and working with the building inspector to see if you need to go ahead and do the special permit or not, so I'm not sure what our steps would be.
So the building, or the building inspector is going to require a special permit for shared parking on this site. Now, as Attorney Donahue said, there are ways that they may appeal that, but at this point, the enforcement officer is resolute that it will be required.
So we don't have to condition anything regarding parking at this point? It's a little confusing because, because of that issue.
Right, and I, I guess my, my advice is I suppose if the, the board won't, this board won't be able to provide the level of oversight moving forward if the use variance is granted tonight to the improvements on the site.
Right.
So it was originally the, or and I believe it still is, the preference of the town is to get the shared parking agreement first.
Okay.
And then consider the use. If the board feels that the, the traffic concerns and pedestrian safety concerns.
So, so far, we have two board members that feel that's a concern, so let's continue with questions.
And I share my colleague's concerns, and I also will add that I, I'm not sure about ADA parking spots and whether this use would, whether the parking spots that are available there would be sufficient under code. Can you, can you tell me a little bit more about that?
I can't tell you with any specificity with regard to the ADA compliance. I can assume that both buildings were and are ADA compliant and have accessible parking interspersed in the parking fields that they have, but I can't tell you with specificity how many of those, other than what you can see on the drawing. If you look at the parking layout plan, you can see that there are two accessible parking spaces directly in front of what is essentially my client's site. At 810 Boston Turnpike, that part that, that comes out toward Route 9 the furthest is the, is the portion of the building she's in. Two of those are marked accessible. I see two marked in the rear as accessible. I only, I see one, but I don't know if that's definitive as to 820. So I think the accessible site's there. Let me be clear on where, where we're going. The applicant accepts, and I don't think there's any question of the board's authority, to both condition a use variance, that we make the improvements as submitted as part of our plan with the markings on the sidewalk. And if the board agrees that it makes sense to add the solar-powered implemented crosswalk in some fashion, that will be the rules of the road as to this use variance, no matter what happens. Whether we make a formal appeal to the building inspector, who hasn't issued a formal decision yet, we've just been chatting on the phone, whether town council weighs in and has her change of mind, those will stay anyways. If a special permit's required, then, anything the planning board adds is on top of that. They can't take that away because it's a condition of the variance already. So you can preserve to the extent that we're suggesting improvements and make sure those are the rules. Whether the planning board requires other things or not as part of its review of the special permit will be conjecture for when, when and if we get there.
Thank you.
I think my only concern is just conditioning the use variance on, on having those safety features. I would like to know what the inspector thinks about whether those are adequate or not. So that'd be my only hesitation to voting with a condition tonight.
Yep, understood. Kevin?
Maybe I missed this in reading, and maybe Rowan, you can answer this for me. Why this is being triggered now? Is this a space that's being divided up, and this is a new space? Is this an existing space already? What's triggering the zoning enforcement officer to bring this forward?
So I guess this is a proposed new use for a tenant on this site, and the, they have submitted a parking plan that includes a calculation of parking that's this site, 810, and 820. So in doing that, again, it's the zoning enforcement officer's opinion that that's a, requires a shared parking agreement, that there needs to be shown adequate safety to move between both sites. So it's being triggered because they're trying to pull parking from an adjacent.
Yeah.
Lot to calculate their parking needs. Is that clear?
Yeah, I guess, to play devil's advocate, I guess, a little bit, is why this wasn't a thing for the previous tenant, but it is now? And if it was sufficient before, why is it not sufficient now, especially where it seems like it's such a limited use?
So, yes, the, there, there is another use on that site that had to go through this process, and during the review and after, it was identified that that level of review by the planning board was unfortunately not meeting the needs of the site or the site had, it's my understanding at least, that, that maybe there wasn't adequate review or there was some sort of changes to how the building inspector has understood the conditions on the site that is needing another round of review, and because this is a new use, the, the shared parking agreement for the other tenant is only for that tenant. So this would be an agreement between this proposed tenant and the owners.
Well, if, if I might, Madam Chair, through you. More specifically to your question, this space was previously occupied by a CrossFit training facility. The parking requirements for the CrossFit training facility as an indoor recreation, which is one space for every four people of capacity and one for every two employees, is a greater parking requirement than retail, which is based upon square footage. By the table submitted to you, this use requires five spaces. That required more. At the five spaces, 810 Boston Turnpike is underparked. It required, it only has 74 spaces, and it requires 83 with my client. It required more when there was CrossFit. CrossFit used the cross parking without any of these discussions in any fashion. Site didn't work out. This emptied out. A different space went to the temple. All the parking was on the table then. There was none of this requirement, and now it's being brought to the table with my client. That's not to suggest any malice or anything else. It's just the, the record reflects that these two sites have been treated as one for parking over and over again, in every fashion that's been used before, and I think the concept of some enhancement for pedestrian safety is always appropriate, but I think here it's, we're, we're kind of killing it a little bit, frankly, given that how long this building's been there, how long it's been used, how deficient it is in the parking requirements alone, but the parking and the aggregate does work. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I just make a quick announcement?
Sure.
For SMC, anyone who's on the Google Meet right now, could you just mute yourself and, and turn off your video, I believe? It was just a request, so, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Donahue, I do have a question. Are both buildings owned by the same entity?
They're owned by affiliated entities. They, they have common ownership, and they're managed by the same company, company management.
Could you give us an idea of the use in the other building? What, what is in there?
In 820, there is a warehouse that is over there, and there is an office type of use. Looking, and I'm relying upon that for, called KMM, but I'm not sure, I could tell you exactly what KMM does. And there's also a warehouse used by a company called Red Bull that takes the majority of the building over there.
Thank you. And Ms. McAllister, is there any history, I mean, do we have history of any accidents? Is there?
I, I don't know that, unfortunately.
Okay. All right. So. Yes, so this is a public hearing. Is there anybody, any other comments from the board before we move on? Public, okay, public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this? Okay. And we have a Zoom meeting happening, so are we good on that?
Um, we're all good. It's not a public, it was just for a presentation.
All right, wonderful. All right. So I'm going to leave it up to the board as to how they would like to proceed, maybe poll each.
Do we move to close the public hearing first?
Unless you were to continue it.
Right.
You would not close it.
So we have to discuss that first, I guess. Well, I guess my position's the same as earlier. I don't think there, I don't see an issue with the use variance. I don't see an issue with shared parking, although I do have the safety concerns with it as drawn, and I think one of the, one of the criteria for a special permit is, is public safety, public good, so I would, I guess I would want to see those things addressed as part of the shared parking.
And I, I do as well, but I feel that will be addressed during the special permit process, which the appellant is now required to go through.
Yeah.
So I have no problem granting the use variance as is.
Ian?
I would like to see some more information about the parking. I'm concerned about public safety. There is a children's jumping facility there, very busy on the weekends, so I'd be interested in shared parking agreement.
Kevin?
I guess I'm kind of inclined to step on the opposite side of this. I mean, it seems like this is a new use that's requiring less parking than what was there previously. The pass-through isn't even a pass-through, it's a dead end leading to other businesses. It's not a throughway. The only traffic through this is just the two small buildings behind with even less parking. So I'm inclined to think that the solution that they've brought forward is certainly more adequate than I think they should be required to bring forward, and I think it's a perfectly acceptable solution. I mean, it's going to be, everybody's seen those blinking lights through the downtown of Shrewsbury. They're tough to, tough to miss.
So you have another person agreeing with you, and I feel the, that will be looked at more closely in the special permit process. I have no problem approving as-is.
So procedurally, would we just?
Make a motion.
Move to approve the variance, and then we'll just deal with the special permit when that application's received?
That's what I'm interpreting.
So you would have to vote to close the public hearing?
No, right, right.
But it's for a variance, so.
But after that.
So I'm, I'm not sure about your question, just what the motion would be?
Yeah, so we'll just, it's just move to approve the variance, and then we'll deal with the, the special permit when that application comes in?
No.
Not going to come in.
It's a special permit through the Planning Board.
Okay, I see.
So we're off. So you're not going to be reviewing that at all, and I apologize if that was not stated clearer. It's a special permit through the Planning Board.
So our question then is just whether we want to condition the variance on?
Or let it. Or continue.
Yeah.
Or continue it.
So I, would you like more discussion or can we entertain a motion? Would you like to?
Well, we got to close the public hearing first, I guess.
Well, yeah.
If we're not going to continue?
If we're not going to continue.
I'm fine with no more discussion.
So I think we should move to?
All right, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Okay, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the variance for Section 6, Table 1, for 810 Boston Turnpike Limited Industrial Scrappy Pet Enterprises, Inc., to conduct dog training services within a portion of a building.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
So.
Can we just do roll call vote on that, just for everyone as a chair as well?
Sure. Peter?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye?
Lisa Barton, aye.
Anne Raffolo, nay.
Kevin Nisbet, aye.
So moved.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Onto our next 6:30 hearing. This is to hear the appeal of McGovern Auto Group Services, DBA, McGovern Collision, 777 Washington Street, Newton, Mass., for two variances and two special permits to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 6, Table 1, Footnote 9, and Section 4B, to reconstruct a non-conforming structure to operate a garage repair shop to store unregistered vehicles on the lot and to have a curb cut within 500 feet of a church upon property located at 420 Boston Turnpike in the Commercial Business District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 33, Plot 079000. Sounds like we have some technical difficulties.
More feedback.
Are we good? Could I ask the appellate to please introduce themselves and let us know a little bit about why?
Thank you to the chair, members of the board. Thank you for seeing us tonight. My name is Richard Ricker and I'm the attorney representing the applicant. I'm here with David McQuill, who is our engineer with Kelly Engineering Group. And we also have John Crandall here in the front row with us from McGovern Auto Group. You may recall that we were here in February for this very proposal. Some of you will recall. And as you will note, I attached a copy of the decision from that meeting to our application here. McGovern Auto Group wants to move forward with a collision center at this location. The collision center would serve its various auto dealerships, and it also would serve as a fit-up center for municipal vehicles, new municipal vehicles, which would come out of one of his dealerships as well. As I noted, we were last here in February 28th of this year. And at that time, you may recall, the northeast corner of the site was vacant, and there was a, there was a blank in that, in the plan at that stage. Well, since that date, McGovern Group has, has signed a occupant for that portion of the site, floor and decor. And it's a Class A occupant, obviously. And so now we're looking at what essentially would be a build-out of the whole site. And this is to bring to you the revised plan of the whole site. You will recall, if you want me to go through all the criteria like I did last time, I'll be happy to do that, otherwise I could address the changes in the plan since the last time we were here. Which would you prefer, Madam Chair?
I think the changes, given that, I think the changes would be fine.
Okay, so the major changes are the parking out on Oak Street, which is, and we went to the Selectmen a couple of weeks ago, and they did re-grant the license at that time for these uses. And the parking out on Oak Street is to be restricted, and I assured them that I would note to you that it should be restricted to new vehicles on that particular lot, on Oak, at Oak Street. They did not want repair vehicles there. Frankly, neither do we, so that was fine. The other change, David?
So.
Is obviously the floor decor building. You can see that, and we've added parking there, and you'll see the parking is delineated, delineated by different colors. David, if you want to run through that?
Sure. So in essence, the only change that the zoning board needs to weigh in on, I guess, is a reduction in the special permit to store new cars from another facility at this facility. Previous permit, I think, and the previous license from the Board of Selectmen granted 333 car storage spaces. With the floor and decor moving into the previously vacant spot, they take up a number of spaces, 180 something or so. So really what the request is, is a reduction of the new inventory excess parking here for the special permit. The special permit for the repair use is identical, that nothing has changed with respect to how they're going to renovate the existing building that's there today to become the home of the collision center. We had left a pad out front and in the middle of doing our drawings to finish this off, somebody came and took it. We wish we kind of finished the old permitting first because now we're permitting?
Then that threw us back to come here again and go to everyone again because of the change of plan.
Or they would, or they would be here and we'd be under renovation, but we're still not quite to demo yet. So really, in essence, the project is changed by finding a spec tenant to take what we were going to leave as a gravel pad. They need some parking. We've added some additional parking, and the net from this board is the same special permit for the use and 245 parking spaces excess to be used for vehicle storage, new vehicle storage.
And that adjustment was made by the Selectmen as well. So that's basically it. We're here because, I think we're here basically because of the change of the plan and the addition of the new occupant, which is floor and decor. So the, the issues remain the same as they did back in February, the entrance being at the low spot, at that spot on Route 9, the fact that the collision center is at the rear of the, of this overall lot. The size of the lot is certainly a consideration. Granted, we're using it, and I think that's good, I would suggest to you. It is, as you can see, a tremendous improvement over what's there now and what has been there for the last many years. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Rowan, anything to add?
Just that this applicant worked with our zoning enforcement officer to identify the color-coded parking. I think that's a helpful attachment for the board members to reference and certainly makes clear the parking uses on the site.
Nothing for me at this time, thank you.
Lisa?
No, I have no issue with this. I just wanted to clarify when you, when you mentioned Attorney Ricker, Oak Street parking, it's parking that is adjacent to Oak Street, not on Oak Street, just for those watching.
I meant to say at the Oak, it's adjacent to the Oak Street entrance. Thank you.
Yes, and that is designated now just for?
New vehicles.
New vehicles. They'll just be parked there, there's no building there.
Correct.
And I have no issue. Thank you.
Correct.
Anne?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Kevin?
No comments either.
Great. My only comment is thank you for improving the site. It is vastly overdue, and we appreciate the investment in the town that you're making. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right. Can I entertain a motion, please?
I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, so we have?
Thank you, Dave.
Two variances and two special permits. Who would like to take a?
You want this one, Lisa?
Jab at this one.
Oh, Lord, I'll try.
Let Lisa do this.
Okay, I'll try. All right. I make a motion to approve two variances and two special permits to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 6, Table 1, Footnote 9, and Section 4B, to reconstruct a non-conforming structure to operate a garage repair shop to store unregistered vehicles on the lot and to have a curb cut within 500 feet of a church upon property located at 420 Boston Turnpike in the Commercial Business District.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
All right.
Anonymously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Two sheets with this one?
Yeah, there's two difference.
There's four.
There's two sheets.
Just two.
Yep.
All right. Moving on to our next public hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Bach Shrewsbury Worcester LLC, 111 Moore Street, Norwood, Mass., 02062, for two special permits and a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, Table 1, and Section 7, Table 2, to locate a sales room for automobiles and a garage and repair shop, and to park inventory and display vehicles with a non-conforming setback upon property located at 701 and 713 Boston Turnpike in the Commercial Business District. The subject premise is located on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 34, Plot 077000, and Tax Plate 35, Plot 00600.
So, we're waiting for our engineer. I'm surprised he's not here, Patrick Healy. This is Mike Clemmie. He's the Vice President of Real Estate Development for Bach Shrewsbury Worcester. And Patrick?
Speak of the devil.
Thank God.
You left us hanging, Patrick.
Incredible timing, really.
So while he's getting ready. Did, Ms. McAllister, did he send you the information?
He did. He just sent me a revised plan.
Yep.
Does that sound right? And it's in the board's packet.
Yes, we have it.
Okay, so should I start while we're waiting for him to come in here?
Um, why don't we start?
Good, we have, with me tonight, as I said, is Mike Clemmie from Bach Subaru of New England. This Jim Patrick from Patrick Motor Mart, and Patrick Healy from Thompson Liston is our engineer of record. Patrick, can you put something up on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Should I talk while you're doing that?
Please do.
Okay.
Sorry, Jim was, Jim was still in the hallway, so I didn't know.
Okay, so this is a proposal to take the piece of land, which is approximately 25 acres, at the corner of South Street and Route 9, and to relocate, basically Subaru of New England is looking to relocate Patrick Motors to that location. Patrick's presently at about a seven-acre location down off of Elm Street and Route 9. They are basically out of space. It is, it has caused some issues for them and the neighbors in the past, so this is a site that they would love to move to, and Subaru of New England would love to move them there. They're one of the top producers for Subaru of New England. They've won several awards within their industry, and I would also note that Patrick has, as does Subaru of New England, has a great record of being a good neighbor and corporate leader in terms of charitable contributions and organizational help within the communities that they serve. This site was purchased about a year ago?
Yes, sir.
About a year ago for over $8 million. The facility that we're looking to locate here would be on about 14 of the 25 acres. The facility itself is a 54,692 square foot facility, so it's a good-sized building. You're talking about the investment of millions of dollars into Shrewsbury to begin with, and then couple that with some more millions of dollars in investments going into the building and the facilities here. Not to mention, not to mention the eventual tax benefits to the community, both in real estate taxes for a $20 million facility, as well as the, as we've talked about with other dealerships, the other types of taxes, excise taxes are one of them, for instance, and personal property taxes that kick off very good income for the communities, and has done so in Shrewsbury. This is a request for a special permit for the auto sales and garage repair shop. The, the site, as I said, maybe you can pull it up on the screen?
I'm having trouble logging in.
Okay, okay, the site itself, as I said, we've got 14 acres that would be developed towards the Route 9 side of the site. The rear portion of the site will remain wooded. The, there is a sizable buffer around this particular building, I would, I would point out. The closest residences, we're talking about for the, for Maplewood condominiums, for instance, one of them, I think the closest that they are is about 700 feet. Patrick? 700, well, six?
I'm sorry.
The Maplewood condominium is 420 feet away, okay?
Actually, sir, because of this change, it became 380.
380, okay. The closest Brentwood residence is 781 feet away. That's up in the rear, to the rear of the property. Now, this is a state-of-the-art building. We're talking about a building that even the service areas are going to be fully HVAC. You're going to see door closure an awful lot in a building like this, because in the summertime, they're going to keep the air in, and in wintertime, they're going to keep the heat in. You've got two doors to access the service base. I would suggest to you, this lends itself to the issue of noise and the question of noise, and I would suggest that you're going to have repair work and the service work for these cars is going to be inside, and so therefore, I would suggest there's no nuisance value there whatsoever. In terms of the lighting, it is going to be dark sky lighting, so you're not going to see any spill onto neighboring properties. You wouldn't anyway with that amount of land behind this facility relative to the Brentwood subdivision, but it still is dark sky illumination, and so we would expect that there would be no spillage off the site. As far as the traffic implications of this particular project, we have submitted a traffic study. There, the conclusion of the study is that there is no significant impact of this facility on the traffic as it is going to be once the facility is fully built out. So, and we do have our traffic engineer with us, Maureen McHugh is sitting in the front row. So if we have any questions for her particularly, she's here to help us in that area. Now, in addition to the special permit request that's in front of you, because we don't have anything in the bylaw, and we've experienced this before, relative to display spaces and whether they require setbacks or not, therefore, because there's nothing in the bylaw, they do. So we're asking for relief from the bylaw for, by variance, for the display and inventory that is showing on the plan down along Route 9 and South Street. Patrick, if you can address that, how many spaces we're dealing with here?
So we have 15 display spaces. So we have 15 display spaces immediately along Route 9. Then we have a number of inventory spaces. Approximately six spaces are in the required front yard district, and then down along South Street, there are two display spaces within the front yard.
So, the reason why I would suggest to you that this is, it's appropriate to ask for a variance for this, is because the topography of that site is rather extreme as you go up the hill. And as you will note, and we're all familiar with that particular corner, South Street and Route 9 are substantially lower than this site itself. Now, the site's going to need to be terraced, as you can see from the plans, and as you terrace up, up a hill and up a site, you know, you lose sight of various things, and probably the most important of which is your vehicles and your, your beautiful building that you're going to build there. But as all auto retailers would want, they would like to have at least some display and some inventory in sight of Route 9 and South Street, so that it acts as a secondary "here we are" type of sign, basically. And, and it's important for them to let people know that they're there. I would suggest to you that it does, it, it does not block any views or anything like that coming in or out of the site. It does, therefore, it doesn't derogate from the intent of the bylaw whatsoever, because not, not only does the bylaw not address it, but it doesn't cause any harm. There's no harm to anyone by virtue of these being terraced up a little bit and then, and then terraced further back. As you can see, and as I said, everything on this site requires terracing. And I would suggest there's no nuisance value to this either, and so there's no harm to the property, to the neighborhood, or to the general public as a result of this. And it is also incidental to just this site. This, this particular problem is, if you look up and down Route 9 there, this site has, it's, it is conspicuously alone in this respect. So I would suggest to you that it is appropriate subject for a variance, and I would ask you to so consider that. With that, Patrick, if you want to address some of the parts of the plan, that would be helpful. I'm sorry we can't have it up on the screen.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm having difficulty with my laptop, so I can't show them. You do have the plans that we submitted.
I tried to get mine, but...
There was a couple of minor modifications that have been made since the time the plans were submitted to you. At the right-hand side of the plan, sort of the northeast corner of the building, there was an exterior space between the cleanup bays and the dumpster alignment. That, that has now been...
Yes, excuse me for one second.
Yep.
I can put the site plan up on the TVs if, just based on the number of people in the room, I think it would be helpful.
Sure, sure.
Good idea.
I would appreciate that, sir.
Do you want to use my laptop for that?
Uh, no, because yours doesn't have the HDMI, so let me just try.
Yep.
I was going to take one second to get the revised site plan up.
Do you want to do that?
It's up to you. You're doing your notes. I mean...
Yeah. How fast would it take you to pull?
Again, I apologize. I didn't do a dry run after I made up the...
Technical mistakes are the hardest ones, right?
One thing that I did fail to point out when, when I started this discussion is, this is a commercial business zone, and, and the subject site that you're looking at and all of the development that you're looking at is within this commercial business zone.
All right. All right, we have it up? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So there on the screen, you can see to the northeast corner of the building, there was about a 40-foot expansion of that to close the gap between the building and the dumpster enclosure that now would be part of the cleanup bay for the facility. So for the record, I'm Patrick Healy of Thompson Liston Associates, Madam Chair. So this adds a slight increase in the square footage that was shown on the previous plan, so the total square footage gross floor area is 50,000, 57,862. That does not change the building coverage percentage, because it was less than a 1% change. As proposed, the building coverage was 4%. This puts it at about 4.2, so it doesn't get to the next percentage point. We also added some dimensions to the plan, showing the distance from the front yard property line to the signs at the crest, at the request of Ms. Sheen. On the Route 9 pylon sign, the setback would be 21.5 feet, and along South Street, the setback is 22.5 feet. Minimum side, sign setback is 20 feet.
And the required setback for buildings is 40 feet.
And then I would like to point out a couple of minor changes to the parking summation. We still have an overall count of 600 vehicles on the property. We added an additional category here that shows, so we're separately breaking down sales, customer sales at 18 spaces, customer service at 61 spaces. We've increased the number of employees based on our discussion with the folks from Patrick. That's currently at 77 spaces, which reduces the overall inventory to 418 autos. And then there are, as we, as Mr. Ricker mentioned earlier, 26 autos in the display spaces as one approaches the site from either driveway. So those are shown in those crosshatch areas. Again, there are two display vehicles down at the South Street entrance. There are two as one approaches the facility, coming up the hill to the first plateau, and then entering from Route 9, there are 15 spaces right along the frontage, and then there are two islands that would have a durable grasp finish, that would have three vehicles on the left, four on the right. If I could just mention some information about the site generally, there's about a 52-foot grade difference as one approaches the building from South Street. So we have a fairly steep driveway that's about 5 to 6% at its steepest part to allow for the auto delivery trucks to, to navigate that. And there is an S curve in the roadway to try to blend the, the grade of that roadway into the hillside. As one approaches the building from Route 9, there's about a three-foot drop from that curb cut to the service entrance. So we're trying to pick up, pick an average grade of the building such that we're minimizing the amount of material that has to be removed from the site. That being said, there is still a significant volume of earth to be moved, and there are some significant slopes and retaining walls required to develop the site. So at its deepest point, where you see the three rows of parking on the left side of the, the plan there, there's about a 36 to 38-foot cut from natural grade with a steep slope coming down, essentially to create that first plateau. Then there's a six-foot drop to the next plateau, there's an eight-foot drop to the floor, building floor grade, and then coming down towards South Street, there's another six-to-eight-foot drop. And then at the low, the low end of that sort of series of plateaus, we still have a significant height of fill. So the, the sort of cut fill line, if you will, where we're blending the floor grade into the hill, sort of cuts diagonally through the building. So for the most part, the building foundation will be on natural grade, and then that retaining wall down closest to South Street is about 28 to 29 feet high.
And, as I said, the terraced effect as you crawl up the hill.
So then, the monument sign along Route 9 is placed at the high point of the hill, so vehicles approaching the site from either direction have the clearest sight distance to that sign. That's about 27 feet high. The bylaw, I believe, allows 30 feet. And the monument sign at the driveway approaching from Route 9 to South Street to that entrance, there's a ground-mounted sign that's about nine feet high and 11 feet wide. And we have provided details of those signs showing that the overall signage, the area of all the signage, both these two signs and the building-mounted signs, is only about 10% of what the zoning bylaw would allow. So, you know, we're not overly signing the place, but we're providing enough signs to allow people to navigate and find their way within the site and approach either the service or sales area.
I would note, if I could, Madam Chair, just a couple other items. As far as test drives for vehicles coming in and out of the site, it's the intent that the, they would occur going in and out of the Route 9 entrance and exit, and we don't have any problem with a condition to that effect. And with regard to sound and, and any other noise issues, I would point out that, that they also do not use any outdoor speakers or intercoms or anything of that nature at their facility. And so there is not going to be any issue of that type either, so. And with regard to trash pickup, they don't allow the trash company to come before 7:30 Just to address what we always know is something that is a question. But with that, if you have any other questions, if you have any questions, we'd be pleased to try to answer them.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister?
All right. Yeah, so just to really quickly summarize, right, this is a special permit for a sales room of automobiles and a garage and repair shop, and a variance for display of vehicles and inventory and setbacks. This will be going before the planning board as well, and in fact, they alluded to it, they have a parking report done, and the planning board is in the process of getting their reviewer to look at that report. So I might advise the board that if that report is of significance to you in your decision-making, potentially to wait for that review to come back as well. I will also share that the planning department met with a handful of abutters regarding this property, just to talk through some of the procedural steps that this, that this site will be going through, again, just for selectman licensing, ZBA licensing, and then planning board, plan review. So I believe that's, that's it on the town side. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Peter?
Thank you for your presentation. Very helpful. I grew up on Lamplighter Drive, I would say, so I'm very sensitive to the concerns that, that residents of this area have. Grew up playing in those woods. I, it's regrettable that they'd be cut down, but I think if there's a place that's appropriate, it's along Route 9. I'm glad to hear that dark skies are part of the plan. I think light pollution is a really legitimate concern. I think one thing that stands out to me in terms of the variance as far as the display vehicles, is it 26 display vehicles? Is, do I have that? Did I count that up correctly?
Through the chair, all of the 26 are not within the front yard setback.
Okay. But it is part of the, it is the variance, isn't it, to park inventory and display vehicles with a nonconforming setback?
But not 26.
But not 26. I see what you're saying. Okay.
Part of that parking lot is within that setback.
Gotcha. So my, my only thought on that is it just seems like an awful lot, particularly where the site is going to be terraced. I think from the road, you should be able to see that there are many, many vehicles parked. And so that, that number of display vehicles seems like a lot, but I'd be interested to what other board members think of that. But I do think a special permit to locate a sales room at this location seems reasonable based on the prevailing uses along this stretch. Yeah, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Ms. Barton?
Thank you. Great presentation, and thank you for pointing out all the revisions regarding the, sorry, regarding the special permit. I too think this is a fitting use for this property. I'm very pleased to see the distance between the neighborhoods and the structure, and so therefore, that makes me lean toward approving your variance for displaying the vehicles. I think you've done a great job pushing the structure and what you're trying to do toward Route 9. I have to say, I'm, I have a question about the impact it would be, and I couldn't, I didn't see it in the traffic, traffic study, and please correct me if I'm wrong if it was addressed in there, but what would the impact be if, what would the impact be to traffic exiting onto Route 9 if the access on South Street were made enter-only? I know that's a big question, but please, love to hear what that would do for you.
My name's Maureen McHugh. I'm from McMahon Associates. We completed the traffic study. We did not look into the impacts of an exit only on South Street, I think is your question. Yeah, our, our, our study reflected what was on the plan.
What was proposed. So I just looked at the numbers, trying to imagine, and I particularly like Figure 13 is a good example. I'm very concerned with people coming out of Price Chopper, making a right turn. So there's, at one point on Figure 13, there's 75 vehicles making a right out of Price Chopper, if I read it correctly, Figure 13. So they would be making a right, and across from them, the projection is that 11 vehicles would be turning left out of Patrick Subaru. So maybe that's not a lot, but I know coming out of Price Chopper and turning right, well, turning left, forget it, I won't do it, but turning right, you're, it's, it's fun. You're, you're trying to get out as quick as you can, but I'm very concerned with two people facing each other coming out, and maybe you could, the engineer could describe how that would work. I, I, they're directly across from each other. So anyway, I, my concern is that, and if, if it were, if you could entertain that access being enter-only, what would it do to your business? What would it do for the traffic coming on, coming out to Route 9? And then my last concern is about test drives. I, would you entertain a condition, it's hard to enforce, but making sure that your customers only use Route 9 for their test drives?
That we can answer, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's support that as well.
Okay. That's it for now, I think.
Ann?
I share Lisa's concerns about that entrance and exit from Price Chopper. It's very difficult to even turn right out of there. Something about the slope coming down from Route 9, people tend to pull into the intersection, and perhaps the traffic study doesn't reflect that there, there are probably many, many near misses if there are not crashes there. So I do have a big problem with those two entrances facing each other, and I'd certainly be interested to see how we could perhaps modify that to make it safer. Also, the density of traffic down, heading south down South Street, trying to take a left, I do that every day multiple times, and at rush hour, it's a real problem waiting for the light to turn. So that's a concern that I have.
Ellen?
I share very similar concerns about that South Street exit. I frequent Price Chopper a lot, and living on Oak Street myself, take a left out of there every day, and it's, it's difficult, and even on non-peak hours, traffic does back up to that Price Chopper entrance-exit. So adding more vehicles there seems to be an issue that would just compound on itself, especially trying to take a left out of there, and if you've got five cars trying to take a right out of a dealership here, it would be virtually impossible to ever take a left there. So I greatly appreciate any further information that could be provided on that, or even exploring plans of putting, pushing the entrance further down. Not that residents would like that, but it may make things easier on that intersection, not that two intersections closer to each other is, or offset like that is great either, but I think getting away from that Route 9 intersection may be a benefit. I do share the concerns about the display vehicles as close as they are to Route 9. I don't know if the appellate can share or has any information. I know the, what is it, the Audi and Mercedes dealerships and the Kia dealership, I think that's there. I don't know if they've gone to the board. I think Kia was recent. I don't think I sat in any of those. Were they in a similar...
They've received similar, similar treatment, yeah.
Okay. Then I'm inclined to be okay with it if they've received similar treatment, because we've seen it just down the road.
So variances may have been granted for display vehicles, but... So variances may have been granted for display vehicles, but to Mr. McAll, oh, sorry, to the question earlier, was it you, Peter? I don't know, about number?
Yeah, there's just a lot of them, that's all.
The number, I don't have an opinion myself on that, but perhaps others do. I'm, I have no problem with having display vehicles within the setback, but the number we could discuss.
Madam Chair, could I address that question?
Yes, please.
So the zoning bylaws are a little gray in this area. So it's our opinion that parking lots can be placed at 10 feet of setback with a landscape strip. So the interpretation of the building inspector is that because it's a display vehicle, it's part of the use and has to meet the front yard setback.
Thank you.
So there's still a vehicle there, but we are setting it back over 20 feet, where we could be 10 feet if it was a parking.
If it was a parking space.
This is the irony of the zoning.
Fair enough.
Okay. That actually changes the way I feel about it a little bit, thank you for that.
Thank you. And I'm not going to belabor any more points until after we hear public commentary myself. So anything else from the board?
No.
Okay. All right, so it's a public hearing. If you would wish to be heard on this matter, I'm going to ask that you keep your comments concise in honor of all of our time, and I invite you to the mic, please introduce yourself by name and address so we can have you as part of the record, please.
Hi, my name is Martin Green, I live at 237 South Street, which is the Maplewood My wife and I have lived there for 20 years, and when we moved there 20 years ago, there were no grocery stores, drugstores, car dealerships, storage facilities, or anything. It was very easy to maintain the quiet enjoyment of our property. Over the years, that's gotten more difficult. We have all those things now, all that commercial development, and the traffic situation is very, very difficult right now. Maplewood is 52 units, and we each have two deeded parking places, so that's potentially 104, if my math is right, 104 cars at any one point in time trying to get in and out of that driveway. So the, in looking at the site plan, there's going to be an entrance and exit on South Street, it's impossible to think that that's not going to increase traffic and increase congestion. It's certainly going to be a problem. We also have a lot of concerns about what is the environmental impact. There's a lot of wetlands around there, this is a major construction project. Right across Brentwood, there's, there's wetlands with a lot of wildlife, there's even been, I'm not a huge fan of turtles, but there's a turtle crossing right across Brentwood there. So you know, that's somewhat of an issue. There's noise, there's lights, there's dust, dirt, all of these things are going to have an impact on our, on our ability to, as I said, enjoy the quiet aspects of our property. So we have some serious concerns about it. The, I think we're wondering as a, as a community, why there has to be an entrance and exit on South Street? And a suggestion, I think, was to move that further north, that, I may have misunderstood what you said, but if that's the case, that'll really compound our problem getting in and out of South, in and out of our complex. It's difficult now, and you mentioned, I mean, you almost have to turn right, even if you want to turn left, and it's going to be much more difficult. So those are, those are just some of the concerns we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, my name is Abhijit Mandari, I live in Maplewood Condes, too. I heard that the South Street entrance exit is going to be used for the delivery trucks. I don't see how that can make a turn on South Street without blocking at least two lanes of traffic right now. Even right now on Price Chopper, when a delivery truck goes there, it blocks the traffic every time, and that's at night. So if there are going to be delivery trucks on the South Street exit and entrance, I don't see how that's even going to make that acute turn, especially in the snow, if there's a slope coming down, as they already mentioned. So that's a real concern. I think along with the test drive, if they could at least commit that no delivery trucks would ever come on the South Street entrance and exit, I think that makes perfect sense, at least from my perspective. And I'll echo everything that has already been said on the congestion side. As you mentioned, if you move further north, that's going to be right across from the Maplewood entrance, which is not actually shown on the site plan. I don't know if there is an option to exit out of the Brentwood, or have another entrance and exit on Route Nine, because there are two addresses, it's 710 and 713, if I'm not mistaken, there's a house right here on Route Nine right now. I don't know if they could, he can exit entrance there itself. And I know the existing location only has one entrance and exit on Patrick Subaru. So I don't know whether they require even two entrances and exits, that would be a question I would want to ask. Okay, that's it from my side, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carol Barton, I live at 30 Brentwood Drive. I reiterate all the concerns about the traffic, and I also want to mention, at the bottom of Brentwood Drive, there's a bus stop, and the children have to cross the crosswalk to get to the bus stop, and a lot of the parents park at the bottom of Brentwood, because again, you can't get out of Brentwood that easily. And I would just like to question, that Attorney Ricker said, you know, there's no negative impact on traffic based on the traffic report, but I'm just really curious how you have a state-of-the-art car dealership, and you have over, what, 500 cars parked on this facility, how does that not negatively impact traffic? I just can't imagine it's status quo. So I would be curious to see the documentation. What's the traffic flow now? What are the numbers of cars, peak times, off times? And what's the impact of bringing all these people to a state-of-the-art dealership? It has to have an impact, and to just come to a conclusion that there's no impact, I just find that challenging. And I would also question, he's saying there's no environmental impact, okay, prove it. You know, how's, oh, the environmental issue is going to be addressed? Like, we want to know the details, we don't want to just hear a conclusion. And I think us neighbors would just like to understand the depth of this project, and how these issues are going to be addressed. Like he mentioned, we're not going to hear noise. Well, what are the hours of the repair shop? You know, just the details of the project, I think would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just add to that, if I may?
Yes.
Just relating to that comment, I also get the impression from folks who have spoken that there's concerns about the construction process, and the noise from that, and the disruption from that, and I'd be interested to know just how long that would be anticipated to be, that might just be helpful for the residents to know if they don't know that already.
Construction timeline, yep, okay. Wonderful, sir?
Hi, good evening, my name is Jamie Lepomardo, Jamie Lepomardo, I live on 7 Brentwood Drive. So I won't repeat a lot of the concerns you've heard, because I think we all share the same, right? South Street's definitely a problem, the bus stop being there, congestion, trying to get in and out, it's just a poorly designed entrance-exit. The noise that we talked about, the only thing I would add to that, if they're going to close doors and things, that sounds great, but incidental noise, car carriers delivering, sales weekends, things like that, it's just not so easy as saying we're going to close the doors. There was a mention of an a-butter meeting, I'm an a-butter, and I've never been met with, so I'm not really sure how that, how that played out. The wetlands seem to be on the plan, I believe the pound engineer called it out as an outdated survey. The wetlands down there connect, not just for turtles, for everybody, and all the wildlife across the street. I think overall, I would put it this way, we're really looking and hoping for the town to advocate for a productive, you know, dealership being there, if that's what's going to happen. We want good neighbors, we want to be good neighbors, we want them to be good neighbors. So I would hope that that, that's the precedent that we're trying to set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I address one of those comments?
Yes, sir.
On the question about the wetlands boundary and the outdated survey, the wetlands were flagged in January of this year, were located by survey. The surveyor had an incorrect note on his plan, that will be corrected on future submissions.
Could you speak up and repeat that, please?
Yes, ma'am. So I was asking about the, or commenting on the comment about the outdated wetland survey. So the surveyor actually located wetland flags in January of this year by survey and put them on the plan. When he wrote the note on the, on the side of the plan, it's incorrect, it has the wrong dates of the survey. So it is a recent wetland survey. We will be filing with the Conservation Commission for work within jurisdiction.
Madam Chair, sorry to do this again, may I just ask a related question?
Yep.
Just very quickly. Another thing that I'm picking up on is concern about noise. This, this large area here that's undeveloped, it's part of the parcel, will that likely remain wooded?
Certainly for now.
Yeah, but I mean, the, so like, for example, there's this, there's this.
I mean, it's residentially zoned, so.
No, 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 right.
It's not commercially zoned.
The, my question is really just to get at, people are very, seem very concerned about noise and light and all that sort of thing. This area back here, that doesn't plan to be developed on, you know, doesn't have any parking on it, would that likely be, remain forested, or is that something that's going to be clear-cut? Just in terms of the vegetative buffer is what I'm getting at, is some of that going to remain or no?
It's Michael Clumby from Subaru New England, thank you for having me tonight. A piece of property is 25 acres, and the piece that we're not touching is residential.
So that'll stay?
It will stay as it is.
Okay.
We have no plans at this time at all, what we're trying to do is build a state-of-the-art facility for the Patrick family, and build it on the commercial zone land, and leave the residential land alone at this time. There's no plans at all for the residential land.
Okay.
We looked up and down Route Nine, and we found this piece, and when I originally found it, they showed me plans for, there's going to be a mall there, there's going to be about 25 stores there, and they could, all kinds of craziness going on there. I'm going to put one dealership, and it's going to be the best use for that piece of property about noise, and I've done a lot of developments, it's limited, limited impact on traffic. We have a traffic engineer to address those questions.
And they're.
On the construction, myself personally will be doing it. I've been working for Ernie Bach, which is my brother-in-law at Subaru New England over 30 years. I've been doing these developments all over New England, and we have a very, very concern for the neighbors. That's why we do the dark sky, we do the tracks at 7:30 at night, at 7:30 after 7:30, so you don't hear the truck going beep, beep, beep. We don't have intercoms. At this time, we're trying to develop the piece of property to put the dealership there, and be good to the neighbors. I asked Mr. Ricker, Attorney Ricker, to get a meeting with the neighbors, it just, it never came to fruition, I apologize for that, everyone. We want to be a good neighbor, we want them to be a good neighbor also. The doors in the service department, we spend additional monies, it's going to be three seconds, doors go up, they go down, you can buy regular doors, it takes about 25 seconds to go up, 30 seconds, there's three, three seconds max, limited noise, limited lights, the construction, I'll be there myself, I'm building the same dealership, it's 56,000 square feet, Milford, Connecticut, I have a very, very good track record, all over New England where I work, I've built up most of the buildings for Bach on Route One in the auto mile, we address all the concerns, we want to be good neighbors. To get back about the time, it'll be about 12 months, it's a very difficult site, we're going to have a lot of site work and coming in and out, but we plan on working within the boundaries of the timeframes of the town. I think it's 7 o'clock to 5 o'clock, that's when we'll be working, no Sundays at all, and we'll be very respectful for any neighbors, they have anything special going on. I'll leave my cell phone number here, anyone has a problem, more than likely to call me, ask me, I'll work with them, and we want to put, you know, beautification to that piece of property, and the Patrick family with the new dealership, and help the Subaru customers. We are the number-two car in New England right now, and we, we go, give back to the community quite a bit. I know the Patrick family's close to $2 million, giving back to local communities, and we want to be a good neighbor, and we're here to work with you folks and the neighbors. Thank you.
That's really helpful, thank you.
Very helpful comments. I do want to finish the public portion of this, so that we can let everyone that is here to be heard gets an opportunity.
Good evening, my name is Connie Cammon, I live at 32 Brentwood Drive, thank you very much for taking this time. I'm concerned about the buffer, how they're going to put up a wall, if there's going to be a fence, or a wall, or a greenery between their property and the adjacent budding residential property. Also, there's a possibility for them to expand 30 feet into residential, I want to know whether they're going up or going to the side of Route Nine, when they do go into the residential spaces. Also, if ledge blasting is required, how would Bach ensure that our backyard and foundations aren't affected? Now, these are the items that I'm concerned with right now, on top of the South Street congestion, which I really am not looking forward to, because already, a lot of people already know that there's going to be a lot of problems if this is the entryway and exit to the proposed dealership. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, my name is Prashipati Gattu, I live on 237 South Street on Maplewood. So I share the same concerns like everybody about the traffic on South Street, it is very tough to make a left turn out of our property in the morning hours, peak hours, you know, between 7, 7 to 8:30, 9:00 are evening hours, and then, you know, there's the bus stops as well, and, you know, the entry and exit on South Street will definitely have an impact on our property, whether it's, you know, right across Price Chopper or towards the side, but I think if there are two or three on Route Nine, why can't the both the entry exits on Route Nine, why should it be on South Street? That's one. And then the lighting, with the high lighting, definitely it's going to have, you know, is there a plan to keep the tree line on South Street, so it blocks the light out of this property, onto our properties? Because these are high lighting, 25, 30 feet lighting, is going to impact our, enjoying our properties. And then on top of that, the, the, you know, traffic lighting and then noise, right, no, yes, the doors can be closed, but there will be noise with the property cars coming in, going in, and even the delivery trucks. So I live on, in Maplewood, Price Chopper has some rules that were agreed upon, which I was not there, whether it was built, but I was told the Price Chopper delivery trucks only come at certain times, but I hear the trucks come in mid, around midnight, or early hours, which is disturbing our sleep. I'm sure this is going to happen, other promises may be made now, but how do we ensure they're kept up? That's all.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to continue with public comments if we could, and then get to that later. Anyone else that wishes to be heard, please?
Hi, I'm Rajni from 237 South Street, Unit 6 Maplewood. We have already experienced a lot of accidents while our entry-exit entrance in the South Street, and it's not only about that, I'm here to represent all those women who are not working, staying home all day. I agree men go home, go to office, they leave in the morning, come in the evening, that's fine with them, it's their concern, but we as a woman who are not working, staying at home, all day we are at home, when we go towards our bedroom, we hear Route Nine noise, here we hear South Street noise, where do we have peace at home? Right? It's, it's about the light, it's about the traffic, it's about the noise, these are my concerns, I don't know how you address them.
Thank you, very much. Sir, is, if you could just allow, anyone else that has not been heard yet, if you don't mind, thank you. One minute, I've got somebody else, please, no, no, you, yes, thank you.
Hello, Dr. Zachary Cammon, pediatric anesthesiologist, I've been working as an attending physician at UMass for about five years. I also bought my second Subaru at Patrick dealership when we first moved out here.
Thank you.
It's an excellent car. I deal with a lot of pediatric traumas at UMass, and I need a car to get me in, through the snow reliably, at short notice, to deal with any traumas, which we do see. One thing I want to bring up with the entrance on South Street, is, you know, I've brought my Subaru to Patrick multiple times to have it fixed, usually at around 7:00 in the morning, and there is a long line of cars waiting to get into the garage, and I imagine with a larger service bay, that line may be much larger, there's probably going to be more booked appointments, and this 7, 7:30 time is around the time that the kids are waiting for the bus stop, and I think this is just a recipe for disaster. And so I would strongly advise, as a physician who sees kids, I had one die over the summer, hit by a car, it does. hit by a car. It does happen. And I would strongly recommend that we do not have any sort of entrance of any kind on South Street.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Venkata Golguri. I'm a resident of Maplewood. So I moved in last year, December. So right now, whenever I take a left to South Street, most of the time, 90% of times, I take left, along with my son. Otherwise, I feel I'm taking very risky turn, because I don't get enough gap. So I try to squeeze in between the gaps I get. So if a entrance is made on South Street, I can imagine it is going to be compounded. Most likely, I will, I need to stop taking left and go right and get onto Route 140 somehow, right? I think that is the only way. So other thing about the traffic, I have one comment. So it is like a three lane on the South Street. So what I would imagine is, somebody is coming onto South Street, they would be trying to get onto the leftmost lane from the rightmost. So they will try to cut two lanes. So if the entrance is not stopping, so the traffic, steady whatever is, has been done, whether it is concerning that fact, most of the people will be trying to get onto the leftmost lane when they're coming out of this dealership. That is one question I have. Other one is, I think, from our property to the dealership, there is 380 feet that is being there. So just I would like to listen. I want to hear like whether it is left by the dealership, or is it, how much is already there and how much buffer is left by the dealership?
Thank you. Anyone else with another comment that has not been added? Sir?
Hi, I'm Vivian. So I'm from Maplewood. I don't want to repeat. I think most of them are done. And the other concern I had is now we have the hill at the Brentwood Road, and which is the peak hill, and where the water, the snow, everything comes in. And there is also the forest area. And now we are on the Maplewood. Now, if it is blocked, and if there is a flat surface now, and if all the snow and water comes in, I don't know where it gets in our, I don't know whether if that is taken care of. And also of the animals, or whatever, that I think somebody has brought up, or all those things. But there's water and ice, right? Snow. So that could come in. And again, the kids there, and also the left, so which is again added to it. So because of the ice during the snow is when I have seen accident in my own family. So the car couldn't stop, it just moved because of the black ice. Even if you apply brake, it doesn't stop. So it'll be the same issues. And if you don't have anything to stop because of the trees and other things, now the water, everything is stopped, or snow has been stopped there.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I allow someone to go second, is there anyone else new that has more comments that we have not spoken of?
David Singer, 400 South Street. I didn't really plan to talk to this meeting, as we all know. I have another one following this. But just hearing this, the entrance on South Street, perhaps similar to what you're doing on our end of South Street, where there are no 18-wheeler tractor trailers being allowed to turn in or out of South Street. They have to use Route 20, so maybe restrict them on Route, on South Street just to Route 9. What I'd like to address here also, I'm sure all these residents, everybody that uses this intersection, is I call it getting emergencyed. You can be sitting at this light, waiting it to turn for three minutes, and all of a sudden, an ambulance comes down from Westboro, overrides the light cycle. And instead of it going back to where it should go to, it circles back to probably east-west, and you can be sitting there six, seven, you know, minutes. It's difficult now, if you're going to increase the traffic in that intersection. I'd really like to see if the town can work with the state, how you can default those lights to go back to whose ever turn it is to, to go next. I've sat there sometimes twice, you know, through intersections. Come to this meeting, I was hoping that that wouldn't happen. And those would be my comments. As far as blasting, that's down the road. We sustained five months of blasting for the Centec North site. It sits on a parallel ground. I would just say to these folks, be very wary of blasting. It will be rocky. It's Shrewsbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else new? No one else new? Second bite at the apple for you.
No, I just wanted to echo-
Could you, um, please step forward?
So this is based on the comment about the 12-month construction timeline-
Mm-hmm.
-that the same restrictions that we would request for the delivery trucks should apply to the construction vehicles as well, please.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I think-
I, I just would like to summarize some of the traffic report, if I can.
Um, that'd be great. We want to close public commentary.
You wouldn't want to close if you wanted to continue.
Yeah, they have to.
Oh, yeah.
The only other thing I will say is that the town hasn't had, the town's reviewer hasn't had a chance to look at the traffic report yet. So we'll hear about it next time?
So, yeah, next meeting, we would be able to have both the report and the review in front of the board.
Okay. Will you be here at next meeting?
Sure.
And we do have a very comprehensive traffic study that was just brought to our attention in the last 24 hours, and it's 124 pages long. There's no way that we could have reviewed it. So I am inclined to, to jump forward-
Yes.
-to, I think I know what the temperament of the board is, just by the shaking of the head. I think we're going to look for a continuation of this hearing, so we can review all of the commentary that has been made, certainly, and I think that you've heard it as well. So I don't want to be the only one. Am I, yes, I'm reading the room correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to ask for a motion to continue the hearing, please, to our next date, which-
As long as you don't need any appellate, appellate comment.
So, yes.
Answer any of those, you would have to do now.
Yeah.
So-
To respond to any of the public comments.
We've got a lot of comments.
Yeah, sure.
You want to, you want to walk through answers to what you have?
I mean, if you're going to continue this, maybe we can come back and, and kind of address the things in a, in an orderly fashion. I mean, we're prepared to address some of them now. I know you have questions about the traffic report.
I, I mean, yeah.
Which way?
Which I think we-
Sure, Mike. Just, just real quick, on, on the trucks, I hear you loud and clear. We're a different type of car company. All the car companies that I've been affiliated with, when we had the retail stores, we've sold all our retail stores besides Ferrari, Maserati. And the car carriers do come in all kinds of crazy times. They have, they leak hydraulic fluid, they leak oils, they leak everything. I can sit here this evening and feel very comfortable about our car carriers. We own them. I personally purchase them all. They're all, they're all black trucks. They're Peterbilt's. They're state-of-the-art. None of them are four years old. They hit 300,000, 400,000 miles. These trucks are good for 2 million miles. They're all diesel. Their trucks are perfect. There's no leakage. And we control the delivery of all the vehicles, and all those deliveries will be done during work hours. And so all the concerns on the trucks, and, and I talked to the Attorney Richter, we'll have a meeting with the neighbors. And I apologize, once again, not for having that before we, meeting you folks. But on the trucks, I can guarantee you, they'll be done, delivered during the day. There won't be any midnight or late at night or any of that. They'll be all during the day. And the lighting, one thing on the lighting, I understand that, but we've designed this to be dark sky. One thing we didn't mention was, one hour after closing, the way I design it and the way we go forward is, we don't want to pay, and Mr. Patrick don't want to pay, for lights on all night long. And so I wire each light differently. And so then, after one hour you close, we only keep a third of the lights on. Number one for safety, number two for thievery. And, you know, we'll have a security camera system up there, but we don't need to keep every light burning all night long. So we close at 8 o'clock. We'll open at 7:00 in the morning till 8 o'clock at night. If we, if we close at 8, the lights will stay on the 9. After 9 o'clock, they'll go down to one-third of the lights right there. There's a lot of other questions, but I, you know, I'd like to set up a meeting with all the neighbors and, and bring some coffee and some donuts and talk about it. And I think we can resolve a lot of the issues.
Yeah.
I'm not the expert on the traffic, so I'll let that go with the traffic expert. But we, we can really work on all these issues.
And in, in the past, when you've set up meetings with neighbors, how, just give me an idea of when you think that could happen?
Well, I, I had reached out to who I thought was the neighborhood liaison, but I didn't get anywhere with that. So, I mean, we're, we're prepared to meet within days, so.
I, I've done it different ways. I've done it at night after work and, and do it, or a Saturday morning, down to the library, bring a tent up, do it right on site. Wherever's convenient for the neighbors, any Saturday, no Sundays, you know, Church Day for me. So whatever's good for the neighbors, usually a Saturday morning. And, and we can come in, meet and talk, and try to work together, resolve some of these issues.
Maybe you could drive into Price Chopper, see how the traffic is.
Once again, Madam Chair, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a traffic expert, and that's why I'm not a traffic expert.
I understand. I understand.
We want to work with everyone. We want this to be a successful project for us-
We appreciate that.
-for Patrick family, for you folks, and the neighbors, something we can all be very proud of, and, and, you know, serve the community Subaru's.
That could go, yeah, that could go a long way, I think.
Right.
Absolutely.
Um, if it's a comment, I have somebody in the back that wants to make a comment. If you could make it brief, please, and to the point, great. Thank you.
We all read the letter saying that we are in the vicinity of 300 feet. And there's a comment made saying that our community is 380 feet. So there is a disconnect in what we receive versus what we said here.
I see. Okay. So if we could look into that, he's saying-
We, we would have the engineer there with the plans and, and sit down-
We're going to address that.
Show them what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'd, we'd be happy to have a neighborhood meeting, frankly. I mean-
Yeah.
If we can maybe get some contacts-
Yeah, it would be nice if there was one point of contact for Brentwood and one point of contact for Maplewood.
If we're noticing the, the communication that we receive from each neighborhood.
I reached out to one.
Okay. Well, we'll get to the right people. I, I feel confident about that.
My, my cell phone number, for anyone has a pen and paper, 781-
Wow.
God bless them.
Wow.
I've been doing this for over 25 years, and I'm successful.
Write this down, everyone.
He wants to address your concerns.
I want to address the concerns, and I want to set this meeting up.
Wonderful.
It's a give and take. Why are you laughing over there?
We think that's great.
It's great.
That, we couldn't ask you for more than that.
I, I tried to have an attorney, it just didn't work out. And so I'm here. And I said earlier in the, in the meeting, I would give my number out. During construction, we figured it's going to be 12 months. So anyone has a problem, take the phone.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay. I think in the interest of everyone's time, I am going to request that we make a motion to continue, please?
Next meeting is November 28th.
So I move to continue this hearing to November 28th at 6:30 PM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to take a brief, five-minute recess. We have a lot more work ahead of us. Appreciate everyone attending.
Do we have to vote that?
Just vote on the recess, just to cover your-
I move to make a five-minute recess to 8:18.
Great. Second?
Aye.
Yes, favor, aye. Run to the bathroom. Yes, favor? Aye. Run to the bathroom. We are, we would-
We're back on, 8:18.
I think we need to ask them-
Or move down the hallway.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
Madam Chair.
Last men standing here. I don't know. Football. All right. So, good evening. We are going to continue on and this is a continued hearing from our September 26th, 2020 meeting. This is in reference to 409 South Street, Gray Star Development LLC and its comprehensive permit, 40B, to permit the construction of a 196-unit age-restricted apartment community. I would, before we continue on, ask Mr. Armenti, please to attest the fact that he has abided by the law, the Mullins Law, that he has reviewed the former footage of our past meetings and you're prepared to sign that you did that.
Yes, I did.
Wonderful. Okay. Good evening again, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ask you to introduce yourself and continue on with our hearing.
That really worked well.
Now, there's an echo. It's nice. Ambience.
I am James Haley. I work for Gray Star. I'm an associate on the development team.
I'm Gary Kerr with Gray Star. I head up all development in the Northeast, set in Boston. Unfortunately, Chris Legocke, who you've met here sometimes before, he and his wife had a baby on Friday and he's out for a few weeks. So you will see him in the future. He's still around and we're- It's fortunate for him, unfortunate for the committee. But he will, he will be back and send his best regards.
And this is Rebecca-
We send ours as well.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes, hi, Rebecca Brown from Greenman Peterson and we're the traffic consultants for this project.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. All right. So where have we left off?
Did we have, sorry, I know I stepped out. Do you have the Mullins-
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Wouldn't mind getting that first. Announcing that we have, did we do that already?
The Mullins?
The letter.
Yes, we did.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
We did, we did.
That's okay. It just needs to be acknowledged.
We need acknowledgement, please.
So if you don't mind, I know you sent me a signed version. Would you just mind coming up and signing it?
Absolutely.
Yourself.
Yeah, Gary, you're the authorizing person.
Oh.
And while we're doing that, I'm going to continue on.
It does have Chris's name, so if you don't mind just-
It's fine.
Okay.
Didn't realize he wasn't going to be here. What else? I'm sorry.
I'm going to continue on. I've got it. Thank you. So during this hearing, the board will be focusing on the review of the traffic report for the proposed project. The applicant's traffic consultant will be invited to present their study on the traffic impacts and the mitigation of the project. And the board's peer review, McMahon and Associates, will then present their review. Jeff Howland, Director of DPW, will also add his comments. Oh, I'm sorry, it looked right over you. I apologize.
He's heading down. He was hiding.
He was hiding. And also our consultant from MHP, Paul Haverdy, is also in attendance. Thank you for that. Ms. McAllister, are there any brief updates that you can provide to us?
Yes. So aside from all the work that's been done to prepare for this hearing, I just wanted to give the board a quick background of what's going on as well. So we've got, we're working with the applicant to revise the waivers regarding water and sewer. So that's an ongoing conversation. We're also in conversation with the assessors to get a new address for the parcel as 409 will remain at, with the residential home. So that's forthcoming. And then I have sent out architecture peer review requests for, again, an architectural peer review. And waiting back, waiting to hear back from the Geotech peer review for the slopes, for their, yeah, for their review of the plans. So a lot of different moving pieces. We'll be sending that to you as we get them, notifying you as changes come up for those. So I think that is it at the moment.
Any board members have any comments, questions on any of the information so far?
Has the site plan changed at all since we last met?
And thank you, yes. So I believe the applicant is going to touch on that.
Okay.
They did submit a revised plan, correct? I believe you did. So it should be in your folders. Obviously, that was today, so I understand that the board hasn't had a chance to take a look. So we will likely be speaking about those changes as well as any revisions or responses to the Graves Common Letter at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. So it's strictly traffic today?
Yes, with, with maybe, I believe they wanted to do an overview of those changes if the board is amenable.
Alrighty. Okay, without further ado, I invite you to begin your presentation.
Great. Rebecca?
All right, thank you. So we did put together a traffic impact and access study for this project. Prior to putting this together, we did meet for a scoping session with the planning department to scope out what would be included in the traffic study, including the time periods for analysis, the intersections that would be studied, when we would actually collect the traffic counts that would be included, and what projects we should be including in terms of background development that, for projects that would be constructed ahead of this project or are ahead in the permitting process. So up on the TVs right now is showing the study area that was included as part of the traffic study. So you can see here, the site is located here at the corner of Route 20 and South Street. And we included the intersections of Route 20 with South Street, the northerly portion of it that intersects with Green Street, as well as the southerly portion of South Street over here, and the intersection of Chestnut and South Street, and the intersection of Route 9 at South Street as well. The time periods where traffic counts were collected and traffic was analyzed were the weekday morning peak hour and weekday evening peak hour, as these would represent the peak hours of traffic both for adjacent street and for site-generated trips with this being a residential development. So traffic counts were collected back in April of 2022. They were adjusted for seasonal variation, consistent with MassDOT standards, and that was verified by the town's peer review consultant as well. And because we started this traffic study before MassDOT issued their directive that no longer requires COVID-19 adjustments, we had also applied a COVID-19 adjustment to the traffic volumes of three and a half percent. They have since said that any counts collected after March 31st of this year no longer require COVID adjustments. So since we counted in April, we did not need to do that. So our volumes are conservative based on that being included. And that was noted in the peer review as well, that that was a conservative traffic volumes. We've grown the traffic volumes out to a seven-year design horizon to 2029, based on a 0.5% per year growth rate, which was consistent with other traffic studies that have been prepared for other developments in the surrounding area and is actually conservative when considering traffic volumes in the area have actually been decreasing slightly over the last 10 years. We also added in traffic from a number of other developments, including the Pointette Hills Farm, the Charles River Labs that were only partially occupied at the times that the counts were done, the University of Massachusetts, again, that was only partially occupied, so we did assume full occupancy of that, the Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond, the Village at Grafton Woods, and the Centec Park North Development right across the street. We also considered other planned roadway improvement projects going on in the area. We know that Route, MassDOT has a Route 20 master plan project, although the funding and timeline for the construction of those improvements has not yet been identified. So we did not include it in our no-build-and-build analysis, but we did also include a sensitivity analysis that showed the impacts of the Route 20 intersections once that project is actually implemented, so that you would be able to see what that would look like as well. Then we estimated trips for the site based on ITE trip generation rates for a senior adult housing development, with this being a 55 and over community, and projected those trips onto the adjacent roadway network based on a journey-to-work model for where people who live within the town of Shrewsbury are working and their anticipated routes to get there. One of the comments that came from the peer review consultant was whether this type of distribution made sense given that this is a 55 and over community. But being a 55 and over community, there is obviously a large population that is still working and those are the majority of the people who are traveling during those weekday morning and evening commuter time periods. So we do feel that that distribution makes sense. In addition, a lot of the employment centers in the surrounding area are also areas with a lot of commercial development where people who are headed to shopping and other commercial developments would also want to travel. So we don't think there's a different distribution pattern that needs to be made based on that. So you can see here kind of how the distribution flows out over each of the study area roadways. We do anticipate that the project would generate an increase of roughly 40 vehicle trips during either the weekday morning or evening peak hour, obviously with the majority of those being exiting in the morning and entering during the evening peak hour. So we projected those out over to the study area intersections and then ran a capacity and queue analysis looking at the operations of each of the study area intersections. And this diagram here is showing you the level of service on the worst approach on any of the intersections. It is, represents the color of the circle and the number inside the circle represents the increase in delay that would occur, the highest increase in delay on any movement through the intersections. So you can see that the intersection of Route 9 and South Street has the highest increase in delay of nine seconds per vehicle on any one approach. Overall, the intersection increases by about two seconds of delay per vehicle passing through the intersection. And the reason for that really is that intersection is already reaching capacity, so a little bit more traffic ends up with a lot more delay to it. But it is relatively low with a nine-second vehicle, or nine seconds per vehicle increase. All the other intersections you can see are operating well at levels of service C or better. The intersection here at South Street and Route 9 is shown as operating at a level of service F. That is mainly because at the time that we did the traffic count, left turns were actually allowed coming out of there and since then, the left turns have been restricted. So it is now signed and striped as a right turn out-only movement. So we've analyzed this as a left turn, which is what's creating a lot of the delay. So with that being analyzed as a right turn only, we would anticipate that that level of service will improve significantly with all the vehicles taking a right turn out and we likely won't see much increase in delay at that intersection at all. So we also did review the crash history at the study area intersections. And all of the intersections within the study area had crash rates that were below the statewide and district-wide averages for similar types of intersections, with the exception of the Route 9 and South Street intersection, where that intersection recently had a road safety audit that was conducted and some improvements that were done since then that we would anticipate to reduce the collision occurrence compared to what is shown here, which was from 2015 to 2019. So pre-COVID conditions and pre those improvements being implemented at that intersection. So we do anticipate that that one will go down. And this project is, as we've shown, isn't likely to have a significant impact at that intersection. The only other one that was kind of getting close to the statewide average was the Route 9 and South Street intersection. And with that having a lot of rear end and angle collisions created by those left turns coming out, so with that being changed to a right turn out only, that likely will decrease the collision occurrence at that location as well. We also did a review of the site distances at the site driveway intersection with Chestnut Street, as well as the South Street intersection with Chestnut Street. So the ones on top are showing you what the sight lines in each direction, where the proposed site driveway will come out at Chestnut Street. And you can see from this diagram, you can see quite far in either direction. And with the clearing of the brush along the site frontage, you'll be able to see well over the required sight lines based on ASHTO coming out of the site driveway. The big item that we noticed, though, was at the Chestnut Street and South Street intersection, where if you are coming out of the, if you're coming down the hill on Chestnut Street and there's kind of that awkward triangle, and if you go to the left of that triangle and you're looking left, the embankment that you see right here does block your sight line. And as part of the site plans, which were just recently submitted to the town, this area will be regraded to improve that sight line to meet not just the minimum requirement for ASHTO, but the desirable requirement for ASHTO for sight lines. And there will be a retaining wall that will be placed well back beyond that sight line triangle. So we will be providing you with updated sight line triangles as part of our response to comments that will show that that area will remain clear, that the wall will be back beyond the requirement. But with that, the sight lines at both those two intersections will exceed the ASHTO desirable sight lines. So with that, as I mentioned, sight lines will exceed ASHTO. The crash rates at the study area intersections are at or below average, with the exception of the one location where the road safety audit was done and improvements were completed. The traffic volumes for this study were projected using very conservative assumptions and based on those, it adds only one vehicle every five to 10 minutes on any of the study area intersections and results in very minimal changes in delay or queues at any of the study area intersections. We did have just a couple of items that we wanted to throw out in response to some of the comments in the peer review letter. I don't know whether you want to hear the peer reviewer first or us to respond to those items. I know a couple of them I mentioned as we went along through the presentation.
Yeah, let's let the peer reviewer have his moment. He's waited all night.
I appreciate that.
Further ado.
Again, for the record, Jeff Bandidi, project manager with McMahon and Associates. So we did the peer review for the noted project. We've submitted a response to comments letter back on October 17th and the town and McMahon has got together and discussed some of the comments related to what was included in the original study. And I just wanted to hit on some of the high notes that I know that Ms. Brown had touched on a few of them already. So I just wanted to outline what those were so that the applicant could provide their responses noted. When, talking mostly about the scoping, you know, we understand the extent of the study area that was included. And I don't know if it's helpful to flip back to that first, that first, the study area map that you had up first, just to illustrate some of the inclusion of some of those intersections. So I just wanted to note that the intersection with Chestnut Street at Route 9 was not originally included in the scope. Understandable from looking at the study area that it's not a signalized location like some of the others or may not see necessarily the amount of existing traffic that some of the other locations might. But given the proposed location of the site driveway on Chestnut Street and, you know, as the applicant illustrated, the high crash rate at the intersection of Route 9 and South Street and also the potential increase in delay at that intersection, we felt that given the use and desire line of folks exiting the site, it might make sense, especially for those that are traveling east on Route 9, that it might be the likely and most desirable route to turn right out of the site, onto Chestnut Street and then turn right onto Route 9 rather than turn left out of the site, right onto South Street and then encounter perhaps some additional delay or queuing at the Route 9 at South Street intersection. So as part of our scope of services, we performed a site visit to investigate the viability of potentially having additional trips on Chestnut Street. So we found it was generally viable, again, with the exclusion of Chestnut Street from the study area. We don't know to what extent that roadway would be able to handle extra traffic. I know the traffic study did mention some friction factors that may be encountered. We understand there's a lot of, you know, activity along Chestnut Street to some extent, you know, site driveways and things like that. But if folks are going to be using that intersection of Chestnut at South, at Route 9, we would just like that intersection to be looked at. Is, are the sight lines okay there? Is it viable for additional traffic? The study mentions, you know, 636 trips per day. Doing the math with the distribution, understandable that not all of those trips are going to come out and turn right, but at least a portion of them might be. So whatever that ends up being, we just want to make sure that the viability of that as an alternative for egress from the site makes sense from both, you know, from a capacity perspective, not as much because it's only just a right turn once you get to Route 9, but mostly from a safety perspective. You know, is there any demonstrated history of crashes there? Is there anything that could be done with respect to sight lines, additional signage, things like that that could potentially increase the viability of that as an alternative access from the site? The second thing I wanted to touch on was the geometry at Chestnut and South Street. And I know that was mentioned as far as the geometry with the triangle. You know, we talked about how the sight lines would be cut back based on the existing embankment. You know, given the entrance from the site from South Street turning left, based on our site visit, it looks to me that it's kind of an awkward entry. Drivers aren't really sure which side of the island they should be staying on when they're making that left turn. So I was just looking for some potential alternatives to modifying the geometry at that intersection. So just looking for some potential alternatives to modifying the geometry at that intersection. You know, potential alternatives could be closing that west leg entirely and making it a T-intersection, or potentially adding some level of additional signage or something like that that could potentially, just, you know, we understand there's not a demonstrated crash history there, but, you know, and, you know, we always like to look at things that are like near misses. You know, sometimes maybe somebody might turn left and someone happens to not be there, like where in, as in some cases, that might not actually be the case. So we just want the applicant to potentially look at alternatives at that location, especially, you know, given that that's the predominant way of entry to the site, given that there's no left turns from, you know, Route 9 down Chestnut Street, potentially all of the traffic is coming, you know, in that direction. And the third, I believe was touched on a little bit, was the trip distribution patterns. That certainly makes sense, given the senior housing. We understand 55-plus doesn't necessarily mean that nobody's working. But again, related to the distribution patterns, if Chestnut Street were to be used as a viable alternative with that kind of, we understand it doesn't affect the sort of macro directions, but if there's a sort of, you know, diversion of some trips that were to use the Route 9 at South Street intersection that are now using Chestnut Street, what would that look like? You know, potentially there would be some improvement in what the level of service at Route 9 at South Street would be. So that could be something that the applicant could look into as a positive overall. And another was just the comparison with the Saturday analysis. I know that the applicant participated in a scoping session that included the weekday morning and weekday afternoon. Table 5 in the traffic study showed that the Saturday midday peak hour is actually higher than both the weekday AM and PM. That's not to say that Saturday is the highest when you look at how the adjacent roadway network compares to the weekday afternoon, for instance. So we don't necessarily expect a full workup and analysis of all the intersections during a Saturday, but just some sort of comparison between how the adjacent roadways look on a Saturday versus the PM, and then some sort of sensitivity analysis and how that compares to what was put together during the weekday morning and weekday afternoon. And did you want me to go over a couple of the discussion points that we had subsequent to us just submitting the letter? Or is that something that the town would want to, would want to outline themselves?
No.
Okay. So subsequent to us putting together our letter, and we could certainly have the dialogue as needed, you referenced the Route 20 at South Street intersection in terms of the Mass DOT project. We understand as part of that project, there'll be some sidewalk construction and crosswalk construction at that location in addition to some additional lanes. Given the proximity of the site, as you could see on the board here, and I understand the access is not direct from the site onto South Street or Route 20, but given the viability of and walkability of, you know, Route 20 subsequent to the construction of Mass DOT improvements, it's possible that folks that are living in this facility, especially being in the active adult community, it's possible that they may want some sort of direct connection from the site to the new, the new connection at Route 20 at South Street. And, you know, from the site plan, there is a crosswalk shown at the site driveway with pedestrian ramps located on either side. However, that pedestrian connection doesn't continue to South Street, nor does it continue from South Street, from Chestnut Street to Route 20. And I understand the applicant is putting together some additional plans that might show sight lines related to, you know, the proximity to the retaining wall. And I was just curious if the, if the applicant had any, had any plans to potentially put in a sidewalk from Chestnut Street, from the site driveway down Chestnut Street, and then to South Street to Route 20 to provide that sort of direct connection as well. And the last portion was the potential with additional crashes just west of the Chestnut Street-South Street intersection that was not included in the analysis. We certainly understand there are limitations to doing crash data research. You know, when you, you pick an intersection point, it only gives you a certain radius beyond that intersection. So when the applicant put together the original study, it's, excuse me, understandable that crashes just west of that site driveway, where there's a slight horizontal curve that kind of comes around. It's more so for vehicles traveling southbound towards the site as, as the roadway is a little bit wide, and then it kind of narrows as the sidewalk kind of disappears and you go around the bend. So we were able to provide some additional context and found that there were a few crashes that occurred just west of that Chestnut Street-South Street driveway in the last four years, which wouldn't have been represented in the Mass DOT crash data, because, again, this data is so recent that Mass DOT has not quote-unquote "closed" that data. In other words, it's still open and can be adjusted as needed as the reporting kind of filters through its process. But I just wanted to make the town and the applicant aware that we were able to research some additional crashes that may not have been attributed to that location specifically, but are present along South Street. So it speaks a little bit to the geometry of vehicles, additional vehicles that might be approaching and accessing the site from South Street, southbound coming from Route 9. So I'll pause there for any additional questions or clarifications that you may have at this time.
Questions, comments from the board?
I have some. Do you have any?
No, it's good.
Oh, okay. So thank you both for your reports. My biggest concern was the Chestnut and South Street sight lines, so I'm really happy to hear that the site plan's been modified. Haven't looked at it yet, though. And on both sides, you both addressed that, so I'm looking forward to that. I, I also had questions about the South Street and Route 20 plans. And I wondered, I, I remember it including sidewalks and whatnot, but I couldn't remember, couldn't recall how far back it goes toward Chestnut Street. So I really appreciate your comments on perhaps looking into extending sidewalks. I don't believe the first site plan, site plan really included any sidewalks, so looking forward to maybe seeing that in the revised site plan going forward. I had a question for the town. Has our UMass, has the UMass at Butter been in communication with us at all? And have they been in contact with you, the appellant, at all? Do we have any communication whatsoever?
I'm not aware of any direct communication with myself.
Okay, because I too drove through there and went the opposite way on Chestnut Street, thinking that's what I would do. So I, I hope we hear from them and hear what they have to say about that possibility. So I appreciate your asking to have the Route 9-Chestnut Street also included in the traffic analysis. I think that's very important.
I just, sorry to interrupt. I also appreciate that, because if you put basically any point east from that location into a, like a GPS, like Google Maps or something like that, it has you go up Chestnut Street to Route 9. So it will be helpful to see that, or it is helpful that you raise that.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all, sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. And then the last point, I too was particularly interested in crash report and the bend that is on South Street, so thank you for bringing that up as well. And this has, I wouldn't expect the appellant to do this, but I'm, and I don't know if the residents there would appreciate this, but extending the guardrails around that corner, I don't think you would want that, however, because it's kind of ugly. Sorry, okay, great. But if we could do something, we post the speed limit there. It is, it says 30, but I wonder if it should be even less. I see the arrows. I slow down all the time. I use that road all the time. But there have been four crashes, I believe, in, or I don't know how many. We'll, we'll see when we see the revised, or the response. So that's it. Sorry, I had a lot of comments there, but thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I agree with what Lisa said. I'm concerned about the traffic. Interested in seeing if any of the peer review suggestions can be implemented.
Mr. Howland?
Jeff Howland, DPW Director. For clarification, Mass DOT has an earmark now for the design and construction of the Route 20 corridor from South Street, South Street-Green Street intersection to the North Pearl Line. It was announced about a month ago.
Great. Do you know what, when that's earmarked?
So they are currently in the 25% design phase. They hope to have 25% design done by spring, which I think for Mass DOT is kind of quick. But that's what they're saying, and they want to move expeditiously towards construction within the next couple of years. At least that's their goal. And I believe there is a sidewalk on the north side and a shared used path on the south
Thank you for that. Attorney Haverty, do you have anything to add? Any comments? We're good?
No.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay. It's a public meeting, so is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Our two friends in the back?
David Sanger, 400 South Street. Last thing I wanted to delay was like Patriots and Celtics action tonight. Here we are. A couple of quick notes. I don't know if I heard this correctly, but did the traffic studies say that in the last 10 years, traffic decreased in the area? Because that, it just wouldn't seem to make sense to me, so I'd like to have some clarification on that. As far as the increase in delay at the traffic light at South Street and Route 20, the two-second per vehicle just doesn't seem realistic. Anybody that sat behind an 18-wheeler, who's the first vehicle to turn right after a red light, you're lucky to get one truck through there before it changes again. With the proposed development that's ever nearing, that's going up next to me on the Allen Farm property, it's going to be a large increase or potential increase of truck traffic that probably wasn't included in here. And when you back two 18-wheelers up on that South Street-Route 20 intersection, you're going to have a major problem as far as time delays and things like that, so I don't see that happening. Some stuff has been touched on here as far as where the accident occurs. This board well knows. Mr. Howland's been active, and we've been active in the cars that wind up in my driveway and in my property from these crashes. I was very excited a couple of weeks ago, and after 30 years, I saw a 30 mile-per-hour speed limit sign come up on the telephone pole with a flashing radar to try and get people to slow down. I don't know if it worked, because when I put the mailbox in to replace the old one, didn't really seem, seem like they slowed down much. Cars come over that yellow line consistently. There's a huge, just a huge, still potential dangerous impact to that. If you've noticed recently, which I did, and I emailed Mr. Howland on Thursday, that 30 mile-an-hour speed limit sign and the flashing radar sign came down just as fast. It went up, why? Because it's the same problem we've had for 30 years. We can't post a speed limit on that road without the traffic surveys, without the average speed. 30 miles an hour. Again, I was elated to see that it was up there, but I kind of had a feeling it was not really the right speed. So that was taken down. The average speed, I was told, based on that traffic survey, was about 36 to 38 miles per hour, which took, and I'm not sure if that included traffic only coming at the radar, or traffic also going away from the radar. But what impacted that radar study was I've got a disastrous amount of dump trucks and big rigs and loading vehicles coming out of the construction site on South Street for the Centec project. They come out of that driveway at 5, 10 miles an hour, some roll down. So there's a great, there was a great impact on that traffic, so I guarantee you, the average rate of speed goes higher than that, which creates a problem, because to create a speed limit, you need to create an average speed. So the average speed based on the radar taken just a couple of weeks ago would have been bumped up to 40. In real time, when you take all the truck traffic that's now on the road, and also then if you start to add Baktory, or if you start to add this, there's such a fluctuation of traffic and where they're coming and how fast they're going. It seems ludicrous to me that the state can put in bylaws that can override a town's bylaws through Chapter 40B, because we don't have enough low-income housing. Yet on the reverse, we can't come up with a bylaw and say to the state, I understand the premise of Mass DOT, we have to take a traffic survey, we need to take an average speed, and that's where it's determined. How does that rule over safety on the street? And so I plead with this board to find a ways to find bylaws that we can reduce the speed, as I said to Mr. Howland and also copied Ms. McAllister. What really needs to be done, and look, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, this project, based on everything that's coming around. I think it's great for the town. We talked about low income and how it can bring that up, the impact to the area compared to everything. I like it. I want to see this, this get done. But I know where those dangers come from, and it's on that road. And I asked Mr. Howland, rather than just a curved arrow, how about we come up with some verbiage on the road that says, "Sharp turn ahead." A sign that actually says, "Slow down now." A sign that actually says, "Stay on the left side of, stay on this side of the yellow line." And signs like that. I'm a traveling salesman. Those have much more impact than 30 miles an hour or 40 miles an hour. Or if a future road study would be done, 50 miles an hour based on Mass DOT's requirements to how to establish a speed limit. So it's really, we're such at the beginning phases of this, and I still get that. But before we really start talking about sidewalks and, and additional traffic, and additional pedestrian traffic, we still need to address the number one concern, which is the speed on the road, the safety on the road. And if you go back to, you know, the sight lines from Chestnut Street, yeah, they're okay. The best way to understand how that traffic works and how fast it can come up from Route 20, or come down from Route 9, come in my driveway and try and back out. Okay? To get out of my driveway, I need to took, I back out, I look left to 20, I look right to Route 9, I look left to 20, I look right to Route 9, and a third time to Route 20 to be sure that I'm safe, because you have no idea how fast those cars approach my driveway a little bit west from Chestnut Street. Coming up from Route 20, it's even faster. The Fredericks couldn't make it here tonight. They're the first driveway over. So I think, again, there's a lot of things that I'm in favor of this, that's a great, you know, for the, for the area, but there's a lot of safety issues, you know, that still need to get done. And based on Mr. Howland's email reply, they're, they're checking into things, but at this point, there's really no solution. And the only solution, other than verbiage signage, is create that speed limit, which will be worse than what we're looking at now. So that's kind of where I, where I wanted to be tonight.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I'm Nancy. I own Donnie Jean's Pet Resort right there next to where you're going to build. Couple of things. The car carriers, I keep bringing this up. They will come down Chestnut Street from Hyundai, BMW. They don't care if you're in the road. They're going 35, 40 miles an hour. So is there a way to make them not do that to get to 20? Get on Route 9? Route 9's right there. They drive down, get on 20, go where they want. Don't come flying down Chestnut Street. Because if you have two, and they don't do it at midnight. They do it at 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM. They're right there at your peak times. And you're saying they're going to come out of your driveway and take a left. If there's cars backed up here, you're going to have a backup in your driveway. So then you might have somebody trying to inch out. Somebody's going to come from South Street onto Chestnut, boom, and hit you. It's such a blind spot right there that really needs to be re-addressed. And I don't know if you've ever stood after you've had a good rain or snow melt. That road is an ice rink. It is just that left side, the right side going down, it is just massive water. Goes to the bottom of that hill, pools there, you can't stop. So there's a couple of concerns with that. The other thing is that at the peak time that you're talking about, a lot of people use Chestnut Street who work on Route 9 eastbound. So they come up 20, come off South, come down, come up, go down Chestnut, turn, because they work in those businesses there. So there is a lot of activity at that time, going straight down Chestnut, then going east onto Route 9. So it is a lot busier than I think it's being made up to be, and that's a concern for my business, because daycare starts at 6:30, 7:00, 8:00. So that's my peak time. And you add all this on top of it, it is going to get a little congested and a little bit more dangerous. That's all. Thank you.
David Sanger, 400 South Street. One last comment I've got on, on the guardrail issue. Probably 20 years ago, we were, we were offered to have that happen. I don't think anybody here really wants to have guardrails in front of them. So years ago, we've had accidents forever. The recent ones, we all know about. I left my file at home from the last 30 years, so this is not a new occurrence. It happens all the time. About maybe 10 or 12 years ago, with one of the insurance settlements we had, because we had one of the retaining walls knocked out, before we could fix it, another car came over the same retaining wall. So we took the second. So we took the second settlement and bought all the boulders, if everybody, if people are familiar with my property, and put them out there. If you drive by now, all those boulders are like pebbles because they've all been hit, they've all been broken. If you drive by my property, you'll see a bunch of the boulders that are in my property, so that's kind of our remedy. In fact, just, just yesterday and then today, we met with people, we're going to, we're going to remedy that. We're getting new boulders, we're going to, you know, spend our own money and put some bigger boulders and at least kind of protect the property and keep people a little bit safer. Extending a guardrail is definitely not an option for us at, at 400 South Street. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? Would we like to continue?
Madam Chair, could we respond to a few of the, the comments that came up?
Sure, can.
From the peer review, the board in, and from the residents as well. Just on a few of the items from the, the peer review. So we, we did look into a number of the things already that were mentioned by Mr. Bandini in terms of the, the Route 9 and Chestnut Street intersection being evaluated. I'm just going to jump ahead, so. On this one, you can see about 20% of the traffic that would be generated by the project would be headed out towards Route 9 to the east. And really that would be exiting traffic because there's a median down the middle of the road, so nobody who is coming from that direction would be able to take a left turn. And people who are coming down from Route 9 from the west, we do anticipate that with the ease of taking that right-hand turn at the signal, they're probably going to do that there as opposed to going, you know, continuing straight through the signal and coming down Chestnut Street. So the only people who would really go through that intersection would be leaving the site and going out Route 9 to the east, which when you look at the volume of traffic that we're anticipating to generate in this percentage, it results in about four to five vehicle trips during either the morning or evening peak hour. Which really is not going to have much of an impact on traffic operations at this intersection. So rather than taking the time to go out and do additional counts and analysis that's really going to show us a couple of seconds increase, what we would prefer to do is take a look at, as was mentioned, the sightlines, the, the safety of that intersection and really focus on that instead so that anything we're, we're doing there, the money is being spent to mitigate a safety issue rather than do an analysis that's not going to show us much from a traffic operations perspective. If the board would be amenable to us taking that approach. The other thing that came up was the Saturday analysis that was requested. And Mr. Bandini did say that he wasn't necessarily asking for us to go out, do counts, do a whole operations analysis, but to do kind of a qualitative assessment of whether there would be any additional impact. So on a Saturday, as was mentioned, it is the higher of the time periods for trip generation by about 12 vehicle trips. When you distribute that out through the study area intersections, it ends up being about three vehicle trips on any of the roadways leading in and out of the study area. By comparison, the traffic volumes on Saturday are 200 to 350 vehicles lower in the Saturday midday time period than they are in the weekday PM time period. So that was why the Saturday condition wasn't included when we went through the scoping process. So for that reason, we would not include the, the Saturday analysis with the PM being the, the more critical time period. The sidewalks going down to South Street at Route 20, I know it sounds like DOT may be advancing that project a little bit sooner than we had originally anticipated. Initially, our concern was if we're in and constructed way before them, then we're constructing sidewalks to nowhere and encouraging people to walk down to, you know, not the safest location to send pedestrians down to. So we can take another look at that now that the situation has changed a little bit. And then for crashes just west of Chestnut Street, along South Street, along this bend, and the discussion about changing this intersection here. We have kind of taken a brief look at that since we got the comment letter in. And it does look like there's some relatively low impact things that could be done there to make it a large impact on the safety of that curve and of this intersection with some additional signage, some striping changes that would better indicate where drivers are actually supposed to be going. To Mr. Singer's point about speeds on the roadway, this is something that we face all the time where we get requests from towns to change the speed limit and they want us to go out and do a speed study. We do the speed study, it turns out the speeds are higher and then Mass DOT wants to come and change the speed limit higher. What we do in those instances is we recommend traffic calming measures to first lower the speed of vehicles going around that curve, then redo the speed study and petition Mass DOT for a lower speed limit. So that is what we would recommend doing here is some measures to try and get the speeds down that would be some additional signage that, you know, the, those little arrows that are out there on the utility poles right now are not MUTCD compliant in terms of spacing and how they're posted. So getting something out there that is, putting those curve warning signs out there, things like that that might help to slow people down, recheck the speeds, then petition DOT for a lower speed limit on that roadway would be a, a better approach to, to follow. I think that might be all of the items.
If I could just comment to that real quick? David Singer, 400 South Street, and I'd send this to Mr. Howland as well. In order for that to happen, this signage needs to start far, farther towards the Route 9 sign, more towards the Charles River Labs driveways where you see the first crosswalk sign. Again, as I drive, the mentality of people driving, if you don't have signage earlier to get them to start thinking to slow down earlier, it's going to be too late by the time they get to the curve. That was part of the problem with the 30 mile an hour where they put that. Signage needs to start early, get people to start early, aware them of the dangers, and they'll slow down. Thank you.
Any more comments?
I just have to interject this one. One of the most effective signs I've seen lately is one that it's like the speed limit signs, it's monitoring your speed, but it says, "Slow down please," and then it, it senses that you slowed down and it says, "Thank you." And then you think, "Oh my God, like somebody's watching me." It's the most effective thing I've seen yet.
Okay, there you go. Anyone else?
If we could just add, Gray Star is prepared to contribute $20,000 to have GPI conduct a traffic calming study. And the balance that is not used for the study will go into these traffic calming measures that we've talked about and these suggestions. You know, there's a lot of creative ways to, to solve this problem, whether it be signage, painted lines, changes in the road texture, so we are all prepared, you know. We, we understand that the dangers that the residents are raising and we want to make sure that our residents as well are, you know, day in, day out, on a safe path to and from the site. So we are totally aligned and that's something that we are prepared to do.
Great, good. Very good. Okay.
Any other comments from peer review or staff?
Any comments, I'm bringing up to anybody that... Okay, I'm getting a lot of shaking of the head, so I'm going to take that as a, a desire to continue.
So I move to continue the hearing.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure, I know the applicant had asked potentially to review the revisions to the site plan?
Yes.
Before we continue?
Oh.
Want to address if you still want to do that, I don't know.
Yes, I think it would be helpful for us to do that.
Please.
Sure, so if I could invite Phil Cordero up? Yeah, I need to log in. I do.
What are you looking for, Peter?
The revised site plan isn't in the folder.
It is in, so if you go to application, 409 South Street, right under the comprehensive permit, is that where you're, are you looking at the separate folder? Just give us a second.
I'm in the folder for tonight, is it the?
I have a separate folder for the comprehensive permit. I suggest you look there. I'll just throw it in that one too, though.
No, no, I'll go back.
Go back to the year.
This one, revised plans? Stated today, so then.
They've also got it up here, I'll put it in your, where you're looking.
Apologies, Board, we obviously were submitting information as we went here and some of this did get to you later than we would have liked, so.
Yeah, and so similar to last meeting where we had a follow-up technical review with, with Graves, we propose that, you know, after reviewing the plans and our comments that, you know, we have another one of those working sessions with the town present to continue into November before the meeting so we can all, you know, make sure that we're addressing all the comments and, and all the waivers correctly. So, thank you. Oh, sure. Yep.
Board, for the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates. I'll be very, very brief this evening, we're also acknowledging you've gotten this last minute, we're not expecting anybody to have processed it. If anything, I hope to just point out some highlights and, and focus you on the areas to look at as you go into the materials with your peer review consultant and we meet for the next technical workshop. The first area has already been mentioned, which is reconfiguration of some of the grading and the retaining walls down at Chestnut and South Street. So that is a, a big improvement as recommended by your consultant. We've pulled all of that back to improve the sightlines more than we needed to, of course, to meet sightline demand at the request of your consultant. We've also heard concerns, some issues were raised relative to parking on-site. We've provided documentation based on Gray Star, the applicant's experience in terms of similar projects, in terms of what they believe to be the appropriate number for parking. We would ask you to consider that. When we get to the site area, there was discussion regarding the actual dimensional requirements of the parking spaces to accommodate the potential, or what the fire department perceived as potential interference of their circulation around the site. What we've elected to do is rather than deepen the parking spaces, we've made accommodations with deeper sidewalks where bumper overhangs for cars can actually extend over the sidewalk, where we have two and a half additional feet that's available without encroaching on pedestrians and encroaching on, on accessibility. So the car can actually, car or truck can actually tuck tightly into the space and avoid that perceived impact that the fire department had noted during our review sessions. We also heard loud and clear the potential that there are oversized vehicles in this market. On the southerly portion of our site, we have developed a large parking area. It's 15 parking spaces that are roughly nine by 22, so even deeper than the town zoning bylaw standard. And those will be operationally controlled by the developer in the, in the event that they need those deeper spaces for vehicles. Again, to further reinforce, we don't anticipate, we don't support any encroachment into those drive aisles that are part of the fire lanes that Chief Colby had mentioned to us during the introduction. He had also asked us to look more deeply into the accessibility for the fire department around the site. And while the circulation hasn't changed, we wanted to make more accommodations for him to be able to access more points of the building. And I'm just flipping to the screen very quickly, I apologize. As part of our swept path analysis plan, the Shrewsbury aerial ladder can continue to navigate around the site and reach all points. It is code compliant with NFPA 1, it is code compliant with 527 CMR, the Massachusetts amendments to NFPA 1. What we didn't have on the original plans, which you can see on the screen, is we've, we've added a drive aisle that's traversable by the fire truck to get us into, to get them into the courtyard area. So it gets them much closer to the inside of that U shape, which we heard was really necessary to fight emergency conditions for the ladder truck. The other element that we wanted to make sure we provided data and feedback to the board and ultimately to the fire department. He had raised concerns about the steepness of two of our areas of the driveway to make sure he could stage on those. He gave us criteria that the truck can't stage beyond eight degrees. So we've given him computations to denote that we are in fact less than eight degrees on both of those areas. So that full circumference, that full perimeter of the building is accessible and stageable by the fire department as they choose to, to do it under emergency, emergency operations. We've added some additional utility information for, at the request of the DPW, for some sewer bypass infrastructure if necessary for this project. So that's been clearly added to the plans. And the ladder revisions, all technical in nature at the request of the peer review consultant, detailing of drainage, correction of some, some piping numbers, that's all in there for you and for your consultants to look at. But by, by being here with you this evening, we wanted to make sure that we were denoting our responsiveness to the applications and making sure these plans are being changed in real time. So every time, every time we're in front of you, you're seeing advancement in terms of the, the progress on the project. So that's it for me, happy to answer any questions if you have them tonight, or we'll deal with them on, on the next meeting.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Phil, that was very helpful. You know, as we said, we, we provided some responses on Friday for some of the operational items that we had previously talked about in the past one to two ZBA hearings, one of them being parking. And so we have provided the board data from Gray Star's portfolio. Gray Star, that we manage 13,500 units of affordable, oh, sorry, excuse me, active adult units around the country. The average utilization rate among our parking lots is roughly .98. And across our portfolio, we are, for suburban products, very similar to what we are building here, we are about at a 1.2. Our proposed project is at a 1.3. So we think we have a, a really strong buffer there that allows for residents as well as visitors and employees. Would also just like to add that we have reached out to a consultant, Kim Lee Horn, they are a national consultant. According to their study, they found that roughly the total, the average active adult property in the United States is at a 1.19 to satisfy their needs for staff, visitors and residents. So, you know, again, we, we have data, we have our own portfolio data, we have a third-party consultant. We've provided Kim Lee Horn's data as well on the last page of the submittal letter that we sent on Friday for you to review. We've gone through all of the properties listed there, there's 48 of them. You know, they are all similar in scope in terms of access to public transit. We, we are not cherry picking data from the middle of, you know, looking at a property in the middle of a city where they'd have a low parking ratio and comping us against that. These are all, you know, suburban where there is a need for parking and we think that, that is most similar to Albemarle-Shrewsbury. Another point that was raised, we also talked about snow removal. So we have identified, you know, lanes within our property to push snow and we have, you know, across our properties in Massachusetts, throughout the Northeast, throughout the country, protocols in place to deal quickly with snow, first and foremost, dealing with emergency access so that emergency vehicles can get in and out of the property as well as onto the ramp that, that Phil mentioned, up to the courtyard. And for any snow in, you know, say a bad nor'easter, we have the, you know, connections, the relationships with, you know, multiple contractors in this, in this region alone to have it removed off-site, any excess snow that is unsafe to keep on-site, to remove it from site and put it at a approved mass DEP facility for removal. A third point is the move-in area. So on the south side of the plan here, we have designated some spots down here planned south for larger vehicles, because we know that they're, you know, we, we acknowledge that vehicles are getting larger every year, it seems like. And for move-ins as well, this area will be set up for, for maybe a, you know, 10, 15 foot U-haul that comes in and, and they can use those spaces. And because, you know, we are acting as a property manager, we know when all move-ins are scheduled to happen, we will, you know, reserve certain spaces for when we know a moving truck is coming. We will first and foremost ensure that it doesn't conflict with trash pickup because again, we have the relationship with the trash pickup company. We do not schedule trash pickup at a time when move-ins are scheduled across any of our Gray Star buildings. So that is a consideration that you all asked us to look into. And so, you know, we have the protocols in place and we have added these longer parking spots, giving a little bit more buffer on the south side of the, of the lot here to allow for both increased flexibility for move-ins, snow removal, and for, for larger oversized vehicles if, if, if it is needed.
I have a question about that. So have you increased the number of spaces, or you have the same spaces and you just made the ones on the bottom deeper?
We have kept the same number of spaces. We're at a 1.3 spaces per unit. So that has not changed.
That hasn't changed.
Yes, we have provided supporting data to show.
Yes, okay. To support your argument.
Yes.
Okay.
And, but the parking spaces on the south side of the lot have been, the size have been increased in dimensions.
Right. And I'm just wondering, you brought them up, you brought up snow storage shortly before that. So our building inspector, I believe it was, recommended that when you have more additional parking spaces than required, they can sometimes be used for snow storage. But your argument there is you have an agreement with your snow removal company to take the snow off-site if there is no.
If there's no place to put the snow, that is standard protocol. Yes, to have it removed from the site and to open up all the parking. In our, in the response letter that we did provide today.
Yes, I saw.
Which, yeah, which we'll give you the chance to review, and we can set up another time to talk about. Phil lays out sort of the exact sequencing of events that happens with snow removal and how that sort of works. But happy to have a follow-up discussion on that, talk about it in the next meeting.
One of the unique things I would say about Gray Star is we are a totally vertically-integrated company. So you're not sitting talking with a developer who then hands this problem off to someone else, who it's not really their responsibility. It all comes around in a circle. We manage close to eight hundred thousand units in the US alone, and we have a management company that's the biggest in the US by far. We're very focused on all of these operational details, and it's all, it's all been pre-worked out. It's not even something where we need to sit and try and, what do we do for this property? This is all standard operating practice for us now.
We're just used to something else, so forgive us.
Understood.
Our expectations are different. Thank you for being that way. Comments? Questions? Concerns?
Looking forward to reading the letter.
We have a lot of reading ahead of us. Okay. Are we good? Okay. Might I get a motion?
I move to continue this hearing to November 28 at 6:30 PM.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. I will admit to picking at the score at fourteen. That's our winning.
What if somebody was recording that?
That's okay.
I move to adjourn.
Yeah.
Move to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, you know what it comes up on my...